I call this meeting to the Tacoma City Council's order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
I'm here.
Councilmember Austin Lane, councilmember Barry, councilmember Clay, councilmember Elrich, councilmember Siemens.
Here.
We do have a quorum here of the council. And the next item on the agenda is council comments and announcements. Are there any comments or announcements? I saw Bruce and then Colleen.
Yeah, I just want to make a quick note that it's going to be officially baseball season later this week. The Silver Spring Tacoma Thunderbolts open their season this Saturday, June 10th, at the Blair Stadium. And they'll be playing for two months. And it's great fun and cheap or free, depending on your age. And lots going on there. And I provided schedules to all the council. And come on out.
I have a constituent that has been asking questions about the city's policy about ticketing and the late fee for not paying your ticket on time and whether or not there's been any aggressive ticketing for people who are in the downtown business area and the relative cost burden for anybody who gets a ticket in the downtown business area. And I was just wondering if you could direct me to the information sources where I can get some answer to those questions. And also, I would like to know, we don't get any money for tickets, right? When police write tickets?
Parking tickets, yes.
But we do get money for parking tickets.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a firm that follows up on the tickets. It's a contract. But for detailed information, Denise Fullitt or Captain Corsi would be your best bet, or I can get it for you.
No, I'll go ask them. Thank you. And then I would like to thank my daughter Piper for making this beautiful necklace for me to wear at the city council meeting tonight. So, thank you, Piper.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. And I hope your daughter will think about making a necklace for me.
Oh, I'll ask her. I bet she'd love to.
Thank you.
Then you'll have to wait for the council meeting.
I would love to. This Saturday, this last Saturday, the Lee Jordan family was... Well, first of all, let me back up. Lee Jordan, if you recall, in March, was presented with Montgomery County Human Rights... He was inducted in the Montgomery County Human Rights Hall of Fame. And this last Saturday, we had a celebration of his induction. It was a very nice event. I really appreciate councilmember Joey Austin Lane coming. And as part of that ceremony, Sandy Jordan, and I'm sorry I forget her married name, who is one of the granddaughters of Lee Jordan, presented the city with the award and has asked that the city find an appropriate place to display the award within the new community center. And I think that's a great idea, since Lee Jordan was certainly one of the best volunteers that we've had in this city and has, you know, worked so much with the young people in the city. I'd also like to take this chance to thank the people who helped to organize that, in addition to Diana Cohn and myself, Patricia Matthews and her sister, Yudora Powell, and then also Joyce Lee, Katie Powell, Yulme Seals, and my wife Joyce. And so I would like to pass this down to you, Mayor.
That's such a lovely thought on the family's part. And we very much appreciate that. And we will find a very special place for it. Lee Jordan is someone who is very important in the city's history. And having him in the Human Rights Hall of Fame for the county, I think, is a very appropriate thing to do. And we will find a very special place for that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I was very honored on Friday to be the graduation speaker for the last eighth grade graduation of Our Lady of Sorrow School. It is going to be a new sort of experiential learning school instead of the current standard middle school, elementary to middle school. It goes kindergarten to eighth grade. And a bunch of wonderful young people graduated eighth grade. The principal tells me that all of them are going on to very good high schools. And many of them came from very low-income families and many of them had come from situations in which they had a great deal of scholastic difficulty. And so the fact that they were graduating and were going on to high school was quite a milestone for many of them. So I was very honored to be asked to participate in that ceremony. This is the... The next item on the agenda is the time set aside for public comments. This is the time for comments and items that are not on our special session agenda. That would mean either work session items or items that are not on the agenda at all. We will have an opportunity for people to comment on special session items as they come up. And I would ask you, when you do come up to the microphone, if you could identify yourself and if you could keep your comments brief. We'll have a little light on the podium that will tell you when your three minutes are up. And I'll let you know, Pat, when your three minutes are up.
I gotta find the mic. There it is.
It's right in front of you. There you go.
Okay, my name is Pat Lovellis, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. And I'd like to thank Terry Siemens and his wife Joyce and everybody involved in that one...
There you go, Pat.
I'd like to thank everybody involved in that wonderful presentation they gave for Lee Jordan, which, to me, Lee Jordan was a very good peace activist. He did a lot for our youth, a lot for our people. And I'd like to ask everybody, if we could, since school graduation is coming out pretty soon, if we could try to keep the memory of Lee Jordan alive by trying to reinforce the value of nonviolence in our youth and also to teach them that they do not have to be slaves to the crack man or the meth man and not to throw Lee Jordan's memory away for a $20 rock or crack. Please, I ask everybody who's even got kids at home watching this, please, don't throw his memory away. Also, I was... I'm gonna ask the city council, since graduation is coming up pretty soon, what would you think of the idea of asking the schools to help register their kids to vote? You know, before they... As part of their graduation, as part of going from being a child to being a responsible citizen of our city? If we could ask them to register to vote, to learn how to vote, as part of graduation, because I think, you know, to choose your government and to choose your government responsibly is very important for our kids. Also, I want to let you know that June 29th until July 2nd, we'll be out in front of the Supreme Court protesting the death penalty. A four-day and a four-night fast and vigil for justice. I would like to ask everybody who can hear me, everybody who's watching, and also our city council, if they would like to come down and take part in our annual four-day fast and vigil to protest the death penalty. And also, we've gotta do everything we can to reinforce life, not violence, no matter what the crime they have committed. God gives a life. Only God has the right to take a life. And by teaching our kids in school to vote responsibly and to act responsibly with a drug-free mind, we can carry that message on to the next generation. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Tacoma Park City Council. My name is Linda Gunter. I live at 302 Grant Avenue, just up the road, in Tacoma Park. And I'm here tonight in my capacity as the Director of Development and Media Relations of Nuclear Information and Resource Service. It's an anti-nuclear power watchdog group. We recently moved our offices from the city, from the District of Columbia, to Tacoma Park, Maryland. We're in the Tacoma Business Center. And to celebrate that move, we're having an office warming and fundraising party on June 15th. And I was advised that the most expedient way to invite all of you to the party was to show up here tonight and present you with the invitations in person. So I'm actually here to do that. The party is also open to the entire community. And we've posted the invitation to The Voice and to the various lists of the many peace groups and other groups around town. So I hope everybody in this room has seen it. And if they haven't, please see me. But I would like the opportunity just to hand these to you.
Sure.
And I apologize that they're not individually addressed, but I wasn't sure who would be here, so.
Well, thank you very much. And we welcome you to our community.
Thank you. We're happy to be here. It's a nice commute.
Yes.
Should I give them to...
Yes, you can give it either to the deputy city manager or to the clerk. And either one of them will make sure that they get distributed to the council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Seth Grimes, 7300 Willow Avenue. I have two purposes here tonight. First is to let you all know, let the public know, that a number of neighborhood associations in Tacoma Park are sponsoring a series of campaign candidate forums. The first is next on June 15th, here in the Community Center Council Chambers, for the District 20 delegate candidates. We have commitments, I believe, from all of the candidates, except for one who is only going to be announcing that evening. So that's June 15th, District 20 delegate candidates. It's nonpartisan. The sponsors are the... Currently are the Tacoma Voice, the Old Town Residents Association, the Westmoreland Area Community Association, Between the Creeks, and the New Hampshire Garden Citizens Association. We've invited the others to co-sponsor. Then on June 22nd, again, here in the council chambers at 7:30, we are slated to have a campaign candidate forum for the District 5 County Council candidates. There's some changes going on there, so we'll see how that rolls out. Secondly, I'd like to share with you a letter that the Old Town Residents Association has addressed to city manager Barb Matthews concerning the hiring of a new police chief. Dear Ms. Matthews, the members of the Old Town Residents Association are sorry that we will soon lose Police Chief Cindy Kramer to retirement. We have found Chief Kramer to be open and responsive to community needs in often difficult moments. We in Old Tacoma especially appreciate her work to address the needs of businesses and residents in and near Main Street our city shares with Tacoma DC and also her attention to all parts of the city. Chief Kramer's planned departure affords you, that's the city manager, an opportunity to hire a replacement who shares her strengths and can address needs that are as yet unmet. While you have the option of promoting from within, we urge you to pursue a thorough search and a competitive evaluation of candidates. We ask that you solicit the views and invite the participation of residents in an advisory capacity. As a start, OTRA would like to volunteer our thoughts as resolved in our May 18 meeting that you look for. Experienced as a senior manager in a force or division of comparable size to Tacoma Park's force of 41 authorized sworn officers plus civilian employees, demonstrated recruiting, management, and retention skills in building and maintaining an effective diverse police organization, interest and experience in interjurisdictional and interdepartmental collaboration, strong abilities to communicate with and to elicit and respond to the priorities of a diverse community and of elected officials, commitment to community policing that gets officers visibly out on the streets throughout the city, strong budgeting and planning skills, experience implementing and/or operating a performance management program that sets goals in terms of services, service levels, and desired outcomes, establishes metrics, measures performance, reports variance, and institutes remediation steps as needed, commitment to stay on the job at least five years, and ability to speak Spanish is desirable. I and OTRA members are at your disposal for further... Excuse me, at your disposal for further discussions. I'd like to emphasize, very briefly, four of those points. Our force is currently six officers below authorized strength, about 15 percent.
Can you wind up, Seth?
We need better recruitment and retention. Interjurisdictional, interdepartmental, we have the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Sea Safe Program and the pending Sea Safe Tacoma Program. We need an emphasis on those programs to make them continue to succeed. Commitment to community policing that gets officers visibly out on the streets throughout the city, I don't need to say anymore on that point. And then a performance management program. Simply put, we'd like to know what we can expect from the police force in terms of service levels, and then we can ensure that those service levels are being met. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Castle. I'd like to comment on affordable housing issues tonight. But first, I want to compliment, I know Mayor Porter was there, several councilmembers were there, Colleen Clay was there, that Affordable Housing Forum was fantastic. I don't know where you got all the speakers, but their ideas were inspiring, to say the least. With regard to affordable housing in the council, I don't know exactly what the council's really supposed to be doing on the rent control issue tonight. But I wanted to express a brief concern, it's kind of procedural, which is that if the council's going to be looking at a lot of specifics and details of exactly what it wants to do with capital improvement petitions or hardship petitions, I think it may be putting the cart before the horse, because I think first you've gotta decide what it is you want to do and then fill in the details. To worry about the details before you know what direction you're going in, I'm afraid you'll end up bogged down in detail. I've also had discussions with some of you about some of the bigger issues involved in rent control and affordable housing. And there's a lot to know out there. And I'd also urge the council not to get bogged down in, you know, sending it off to a committee to study, but to actually do something in the very near future about affordable housing and rent control. And my final comment on that point is that landlords would like to see that there be a phase out of rent control, but also that affordable housing be addressed over... Well, for the long haul, that there's something sustainable in Tacoma Park and affordable housing beyond just suppressing rents. Thank you.
Thank you. I noticed that you had left me a message, and I just wanted to let you know that I have open office hours. Anyone can come in and talk to me that wants to. You can either drop in or make an appointment with Peggy Forster. My office hours are 3:00 to 5:00 on Tuesday afternoons and 7:30 to 9:30 Wednesday evenings. And that is an invitation for anyone who would like to talk to me about any issue.
How you doing? My name is Otis Matthews, born and raised in Tacoma Park, resident of 105 Geneva Avenue. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you to the council and definitely thank you. Thank you, Terry. I'm Lee Jordan's grandson. And if you know Tacoma Park, you know that that's been the heart of everything that he's ever, ever done. And I definitely have to commend everything that has been done in Tacoma Park to keep his legacy, to keep his heart, to keep his spirit alive in Tacoma Park. You know, I'm an ex-paratrooper and I've been... I've traveled. And you know, no matter where I go, I can always count as Tacoma Park as being the center of everything that's good. You know, as you go out to different countries and different cities, you do notice that people lose the family orientation that we've all grown up with. But whenever you come back to Tacoma Park, you always realize that you are home, no matter where you've been. I don't want to take up a lot of your time, but I just would like to thank everyone for a little piece, a little part, and keep Tacoma Park the way it has all... Excuse me, the way it has always been. Thanks a lot.
Well, thank you very much. And we also would like to thank you and your family for asking us to keep this award membership in the Human Rights Hall of Fame that Lee Jordan got posthumously. And we will find a very special place in the community center for it. Thank you.
You appreciate it, ma'am.
Anyone else? All right. We have the city manager is out of town. We have the deputy city manager, Wayne Hobbs. Did you have anything you wanted to talk to us about during the city manager's comments?
Yes, a couple of things on the community center. The parking lot, the back end of it has been repaired and structural engineer has reviewed it and approved the repairs. The front end ran into some problems last week with the culvert, but they've worked out a solution. And that's gonna be ongoing for about another week or so, probably around the 16th before the full parking lot is open again. Tomorrow, the fire inspector will be here to inspect the community center. If that's successful, and we expect it will be, TRW can then file for a building inspection, which we would hope would take place by the end of the week. So we're pretty close on getting occupancy.
And that's the last thing that needs to happen before the rooms can be used?
Yes. That has to be approved. As you know, we had borings done out back as part of the process for the feasibility on the gymnasium. There was a turnover personnel at the company that was doing the borings, but that's back on track. They promised us the results of the borings in a full report within the next two weeks. On other subjects, we had the auditors in here all last week, and they have left and they're gonna return around August 21st, which is a month sooner than they came last year. And I think a lot of that is due to the efforts and the good work of Yvonne DeBrook's and the finance staff this year. And we have an intern that started today from MML for the summer named Elizabeth Bonhoff. We're glad to have her.
And I believe she's doing a particular project, isn't she?
There's a number of projects she's gonna be working on, along with Suzanne, and planning.
Okay. Are there questions, Terry?
Thank you. Mr. Hobbs, I know that we have ordered, or I understand, we've ordered some signs for placement throughout the building to direct people on where the different services and facilities are.
That's correct.
Do we have any estimate yet on when those signs will be installed?
I don't know that tonight, sir. I'll find out and then send you all an email as to what it is.
I know. I continue to hear frustrations from people trying to find facilities here in some of the rooms, including this council chamber.
We share the frustration.
Yeah. And one thing that came to mind is I don't know whether new employees actually get a tour of the facility, but I think that's important, especially for the police department, who does not have day-to-day business at the upper two levels of the building. And so I would just like to suggest that we do provide a tour so that when residents do encounter any of our employees with questions on where something is located, they would have some familiarity with it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a series of interviews. We're interviewing four individuals this evening for positions on the Commission on Landlord-Tenant Affairs. We have one person who's not on the board and three people who are. I think probably the best way to do it would be to ask all of them to come up if they're here. Dorothy Clennan, Mary Forrest Doyle, Jarrett K. Smith, and Catherine Wakeland. I'd like to start first with the new person. The usual question that we ask applicants first to start off is about their interest. Now, we've got the background information that you sent, and I do note that you're an attorney, which I think is...
Retired.
Retired attorney.
Once an attorney, always an attorney.
An attorney who actually has time on her hands. But if you could just tell us... If you could just tell us a little bit about why you're interested in being appointed to COLTA.
Well, I've lived in the city a very long time. And I was fairly active in local affairs before I went to school. And then I got a job, and the job was really, really demanding. And I didn't have time to do anything. I have been retired for almost two years now. And although I do other volunteer work, I've never done anything that really used my legal skills. And although I've never done landlord-tenant work, I have been a regulatory lawyer my whole career. And I also have done a lot of informal negotiation. And I think this would be an opportunity to put some of those skills to use. I also, you know, I love this city. I moved here in February of 1972. That's a very long time. And, you know, it's time for me to give something back. That sounds hokey, but it's true.
Well, I appreciate that. I also noticed from your letter that you, although you currently are neither a tenant or landlord, you say you have actually been both.
That's correct.
One of the questions that I ask people is whether they have had experience with the type of quasi-legal body that COLTA is, but I don't think I have to ask you that, because I think you've already answered that question. Are there other questions that the council has? I think probably we've gotten all of the questions answered that we needed to have answered in terms of your resume and the other information that you sent us. So I very much appreciate that. In terms of the other people who are applying for reappointment, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about what COLTA is doing and the workload and anything that you might suggest that we could do differently than we're doing. I don't know if you wanna... Does the chair want to start?
Happy to. Well, my experience has been that the cases have been... That have gone to hearing this year have been fewer. Last year, we seemed... I personally was pretty busy, busier than in many years before that. And I've been, I think I've been about a decade on COLTA. But this year, it seems to me... I've said on fewer hearings and that there may be fewer hearings, which I think is good news, because matters may be being resolved, you know, so that they don't come to a hearing. But I don't have any ideas for doing things differently, because I think it runs... I think the program runs pretty well, from my experience.
Okay. Ms. Clennan, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I agree with Mary. The cases seem to be fewer, which indicate that things are being resolved and not having to come to the COLTA hearing. So that's good news. It's been a good experience for me. And the experience is everything that Moses Wild said, that it would be enjoyable. And I did enjoy the cases that I had to sit on. It's real fun, and even though it's serious business.
Well, we certainly appreciate that you're willing to re-up for another term.
Yeah, I'm willing. I still have time, so.
Mr. Smith, did you have any reflections you'd like to?
The only thing I'd like to say is Moses Wild and his team are doing a great job in resolving issues before they have to go to a COLTA hearing. And that just shows how efficient he in his office is.
Are there questions that the council has for any of the members requesting reappointment?
I don't have any particular questions. I just wanted to express my appreciation to Catherine for you stepping forward. I'm always glad to see Ward 1 residents serving on city committees. And Mary has set a great example in that respect. And thank you to the other candidates as well. I'm very appreciative of the work that you do on COLTA.
Our executive director also, I'm sorry, I forgot to say, Ken Sigmund is great. He's just done a fabulous job. He's really professional and so prepared, and he really helps us a lot.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. And also glad to hear that you think that many of the cases that could have come before you were being solved before they get there. That certainly was our intent... certainly was our intention, and we realize that 100% won't, but we're glad that you're not having to handle everything. Well, thank you all very much. We very much appreciate your interest, and we, Ms. Wakeland, we appreciate your interest. Jesse, do we have anyone else who has applied for COLTA?
Yes.
Okay, so we can probably wrap this up and do the appointments fairly quickly. We will then do that as soon as I can get it on the agenda. Thank you all very much. We very much appreciate your interest. The next items on the agenda are special session items, and we're going to begin with a series of ordinances having to do with the city budget. The first one on the list, we do these in the order we do because they have to be done in a certain order. The first one is the ordinance establishing the tax rate for fiscal year 2007, and it would set the tax rate at 63 cents per $100 of assessed valuation for real property, which is also the current tax rate. Would someone like to move the ordinance?
Someone.
Okay, it's been moved, and seconded. Is any council comments on your end, Mr. Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I know in the past we have talked about how the property taxes really do not have a direct effect on our tenants within the city, and we have many, with our affordable housing program, we have attempted to attract, and I think very successfully attracted, many low-income residents of the county. But I know that in our discussions of the affordable housing, we have talked about adding a tax surcharge or allowing landlords to have a tax surcharge. And I just want to understand, does this mean that we would be, if we were to implement that, kind of allowing landlords to pass through increases in property taxes?
The answer to your question is that the council hasn't made that determination yet, and we're actually going to be discussing that this evening. And the other thing that I would say is that I don't believe that it's true that tax rates don't have an impact on tenants. I think that they are one of the expenses that landlords base rents on, and if they were in a position where they needed a hardship petition, that would be one of the expenses that they could use. Is that the end of your question?
That answers my question. Again, I empathize with the low-income residents of the city and those on fixed incomes that I know we have not included, we have included some assistance for the homeowners for some property tax relief. I think as we think about our affordable housing program, it would be good if we could include some kind of program that would provide some rental assistance to those low-income residents that, you know, they're talking about $5 being an impact on them per month. You know, I'm sure taxes aren't going to be affecting them at $5 a month, but money is very tight, and I think we need to keep that in mind for our, especially for that community that we're trying to attract with our affordable housing programs.
I just wanted to say about the tax rate that I feel very positive about the budget that we have put together and that we'll be voting on tonight. In terms of the tax rate, I, along with Councilmember Williams, did want to see a decrease and hope that the council will continue moving in that direction in the near future. The positive thing that I believe we're doing is providing relief to low-income residents in Tacoma Park who are homeowners, and so, to be continued next year.
Are there any other comments? Are there any public comments on this ordinance? Would anyone like to speak on the ordinance establishing the tax rate? All right, seeing no one. This is the first reading of this ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ordinance passes at first reading. The next ordinance that we're looking is the ordinance approving and adopting the stormwater management budget. In order to consider this, the council first has to vote to convene as the Stormwater Management Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The council is now meeting as the council and the Stormwater Management Board. In that capacity, does someone want to move the ordinance?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. The stormwater, the proposed stormwater management budget is based on a increase in the stormwater management fee for a single-family home to $48, which is an increase over its current...
Twenty-eight sixty-eight.
Twenty-eight sixty-eight. I'm glad someone can remember numbers. So it is an increase, a substantial increase over what it's been for the last several years, actually. We haven't changed in a number of years. Are there any council comments on this ordinance? Any public comments on this ordinance? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The stormwater management budget passes. The next item is the ordinance adopting the budget for fiscal year 2007.
Do you have to change your convening status?
No, actually, my understanding is we don't have to unconvene as the Stormwater Management Board, because even as the Stormwater Management Board, we also, we also continue as the city council.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is any council comments? This is the final version of the budget, which varies somewhat from the budget proposed by the city manager. The council deleted some things and added some things, but it's, I was comparing the numbers over the weekend, and I think that they, I mean, most of the big changes were things over which we had no control, like the increase in healthcare costs. The council tried to keep the additions and subtractions that we dealt with very close to even. Anyone want to make any comments on the budget? Any public comments on the budget? All right, all those in favor of this ordinance approving the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ordinance approving the budget passes at first reading. My intention is to put them up for second reading next week. I'd like to do this. We have to pass the budget by the end of June. The council will not be meeting the last week in June, and so we only have two more weeks, and rather than running up until the very last week, and then maybe there's a hurricane or something, and we don't pass the budget, I'm going to do it for next week. I didn't say that. The next item on the agenda is the ordinance that adopts the management and non-union pay staff, staff pay plan.
Move it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there anything you wanted to say, Wayne?
Just that it's, we have been traditionally basing our adjustment on wages on the Department of Labor Wage and Salary Employment Cost Index for state, local, and local governments at the end of December. And this year, that showed, the December 2005 index showed an increase of 3.1%. Therefore, the pay tables are being adjusted by 3.1%. Also, the ASME personnel negotiations have not been concluded with ASME, therefore that will come to you at a later time.
Okay, so we are, actually, what we have in front of us is the staff who are not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. Then we'll be followed by police collective bargaining, and that just leaves the ASME in. Okay. All right.
I don't think so. I'll move it. Has it been moved? Okay. Then I've got a question.
You're becoming as absent-minded as I am. Go ahead.
We do a market analysis every five years.
We're doing a market analysis right now. It's not completed. You approved it back about six weeks ago. That's not been concluded. We're working through that. It'll probably be part of the basis for whatever we do with the ASME wages. We did not do one this year for police wages since we're into the second, just into the, ending the first year of a three-year contract with the local 400.
So what's the timing on that one?
On which one?
On police, in terms of when the, when the actual market adjustment gets completed.
We'll probably do a police one next year, see where we stand.
I guess my only concern was, we've talked about the difficulty of retaining and attracting police officers and being a high priority. I'm just wondering whether waiting till next year to examine where we stand in the market, should we be doing that sooner or later?
Well, actually, this is a discussion of the, not the ordinance we're considering, but the next one. But go ahead.
The, last year when we looked at it, our starting salaries for police officers were pretty comparable with the surrounding jurisdiction and very close to Montgomery County. It's my hope that the 3.1% will keep us there. I don't know right now what the county and the other cities have done, and we'll look at it, and certainly do. And there's nothing to preclude us, I guess, to come back to council at any time and request increases, if we could find the money for it.
Yeah. Are there any other council questions or comments on not the police pay ordinance, but the ordinance for staff who are not covered by a collective bargaining agreement? Are there any public comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ordinance passes at first reading, and now we are taking up the ordinance to adopt the pay scale for police officers.
Move the ordinance.
Would someone like to second it?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Was there anything in addition you were planning to talk about with this one, or did you cover everything enough?
It's along the same lines.
All right. Any additional questions or comments? Any public comments? All right. All those in favor of the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ordinance passes at first reading. Okay. We are a little bit ahead of schedule. Was somebody from Public Works going to be here for the...
Daryl's supposed to be here, yes.
Okay, well, we probably, we probably will totally shock her if we are this far ahead of schedule. Actually, we're not this far. We're two minutes ahead of schedule. Can we begin consideration of this?
We can go with the first one on the trucks. I can talk to that. We're talking about buying two vehicles, trucks as replacement vehicles for public works. Three bids were obtained from three different Ford dealers in the area, and Orsman Ford came in with the lowest bid, and that's what we're proposing to buy, both a dump truck at $48,644 and a pickup truck at $23,905.
Daryl's right on time, and we're ahead, so we're just talking about it here.
Just grab a table.
We shock you and go ahead of schedule.
I just started explaining that you did three bids for the trucks, and the lower bidder was Orsman for the two of them.
Yeah, this is for the, are we doing them together, the both trucks together, or do you want to talk about them separately?
Yeah, I was in the same ordinance, dump truck and pickup truck.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, through the normal process, we solicited bids. Because we select Ford as our vehicle of choice, we're limited to that manufacturer, but there are plenty of Ford dealers out, and we got a variety of different bids, the lowest one being from Orsman Ford for both the 450 and the 250. The 450 truck is also coming with a plow and a spreader. The 250 is a replacement for a van that we used to use in the right-of-way division, and it was the agreement of the staff that a pickup truck would be much more useful for what we ended up using it for largely, and we're also getting a lift gate on that truck. We have two vehicles in the yard right now that have lift gates, and they're heavily used by departments other than our own, rec. department and others, when they need assistance. So having another lift gate available on a small, not large-duty truck will be of use to not only our department, but other departments. They indicated that both trucks were available over a fairly short time span, so we'll be able to get these in within four to six weeks.
One of the things that I notice is that because the purchase is not being finalized until the next fiscal year, we're moving the monies over, we can't, we can't commit the monies?
The, our new finance director consulted with the auditors and said that if the product is delivered after the new fiscal year, then it needs to be charged in that fiscal year that it's delivered. And so what we've done is we've taken the monies out of the '06 and pushed them into the '07 budget, and that's in the budget that you recommended adoption of.
Right. I figured there was probably a reason, and that sounds reasonable. But those are the only questions I have, Terry.
Thank you. Daryl, I understand, right, we're going to be replacing the current van and dump truck with a pickup truck and a dump truck. Is the current van, has it been used by the recreation department for any of their programs?
No, it was first used by the building maintenance division and then switched over to the right-of-way division, but it hasn't been used by anything, any department outside our own.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, at one point, we had two vans. One was used by the sanitation division, and one was used by the right-of-way division. I guess in their time, they served a purpose when we did a lot more of moving people to different trucks and things. But both the sanitation division got rid of their van, and the right-of-way division would prefer a pickup truck.
This doesn't mean that people are going to be riding in the back of the pickup truck.
No, no. No, now the trucks connect on the route. They don't go back into the yard and get dispersed again, so we just have a different way of handling, yeah, no people will ride in the back of the truck.
Actually, I heard a story of a staff member who was hitting a large and well-known discount furniture store at a sale and had great difficulty moving the boxes that she purchased onto the back of the truck that she was allowed to borrow because there was not a lift gate, so I think that this probably will be cheered by people outside of public areas.
It will be well-used.
Okay. Let's see. Did somebody move this ordinance?
Move it. Just in case.
Jesse, did we move this ordinance yet? Okay, it's been moved by Mark.
Seconded.
Seconded by two people, and Jesse gets to choose who she writes down. Okay, and we've already discussed this. Any further...
Single reading ordinance.
Ah, single reading ordinance. Thank you for reminding me. You can tell I'm absent-minded this evening, can't you? Any other council comments or questions? Any public comments on this ordinance, purchasing a pickup truck and a dump truck? All right, seeing, seeing no questions or comments, since it's a single reading ordinance, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter?
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane? Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Omit?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman?
Aye.
And Councilmember Wade?
Aye.
That was an aye, I think.
Might I just add that these, particularly the dump truck, I forgot to mention, the 450 is a diesel vehicle, and because we're getting a 2007 model year, it comes with the greater emission controls than was on the previous 2006 models. I know we've had some questions about that, but it's an improvement in the air quality in terms of emissions on the 2007 models federally mandated, so we'll be getting that improvement with that vehicle.
Could it still use biodiesel?
Yes, it'll still be able to use our biodiesel.
All right. You want to talk to us about the next one, which is the contract for the precast concrete walls for the salt dome?
Yes, the process for getting the salt dome facility constructed has been complex, but we're getting through it, and you probably recall the council's originally approved a purchase of the dome structure facility, the top, basically. At the point in which we were going to the council for that approval, we envisioned using the city's indefinite quantities contractor to demolish the old facility, make a new pad, and pour both the floor as well as foundation and walls for the salt storage facility. In talking to the dome manufacturer and actually going on-site to several locations, we noticed that a lot of the locations use precast concrete walls, so we started checking into price comparisons. It was actually significantly cheaper to do a precast wall construction versus a poured concrete construction. It also requires much less in terms of footers and foundations because the precast walls are actually on a, kind of a floating footer. They don't, they're not any deeper than six inches below the surface, but they're four feet wide, so they're a very wide base with the narrow wall that comes up eight feet, six inches off the ground. So the walls themselves will... Um, so the walls themselves will still end up being eight, eight feet high. Uh, so we, uh, immediately hooked up with one manufacturer who gave us a price, and we started to look for others. Um, and that was where the challenge came in, I was unable to identify, I found plenty of precast concrete manufacturers, but unable to get one to give us another quote. Uh, and I talked to six different companies. Uh, some of them manufactured them, but our, our project was so small, they just, you know, wasn't in their, in their interest. Uh, others do different kind of precast work. Um, the company that we, uh, got the lower price from, Keystone Concrete, uh, we saw their facilities in, in, uh, the Howard County area, and we spoke to people that, that have their facilities, so we're quite confident that they manufacture a product that will work very well, uh, for the salt storage facility. Uh, and we, we do believe we have a very, uh, cost-effective price, um, particularly compared with the, um, our contractor who's gonna pour the, you know, pour form concrete walls versus the precast walls. So that is, uh, what we'd like to do at this point, since we've purchased the dome, we'd now like to purchase the walls. I don't know if anybody's been up at Public Works, but the old facility has been demolished and, and removed, and the, uh, new, the, the, uh, area for the new facility's been excavated and gravels down, and it's, it's waiting for the walls and dome, and then, once the walls and dome are up, we'll have the concrete pad, uh, poured for the floor and the driveway apron of it, or the opening of it. So, uh, this is just, uh, a one more piece in the, um, installation of this, this project.
So you put the walls up and then pour the floor?
Yep, yep, the walls go up first and then the floor is poured. Again, uh, they set the walls on a two-inch stone dust, um, configuration, so the walls themselves, uh, the concrete pad will go up to it, but it won't go over it, they won't be sunk within. And, uh, the structure itself ends up kind of working as a unit, um, balancing itself and creating a foundation as a, as a connected eight-foot long, eight-foot and 10-foot long sections of wall connected together. So they do not recommend submit, putting them in the ground at all, other than the six inches that, that, uh, is currently set on.
Standard procedure.
Is that standard procedure?
Yeah, there's some backfilling, uh-
You can tell how much I know about precast concrete.
There's some backfilling that we'll do around the sides and back of it once it's installed, just to give additional support to the structure, but it is supposed to be, um, you know, standalone, uh, type of construction, and then the dome will get attached right onto it with, um, metal grommets that, that, uh, secure it to the walls.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Did you have a question, Dan?
I, more of a comment. Uh, I, you know, I can't, I won't go into my frustration and disappointment that this has taken so many years to get us to this point of actually building a, uh, responsible structure to house the chemicals that we use for our roads, but it, uh, pleases me very much that we're finally doing that, and also, uh, I've just been very satisfied to see the work that you've done to ensure that we get the, the best bang for the buck in this facility. Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Yes, I'd like to add that I do appreciate, this is not the only time you've done this, but I do appreciate your efforts to find the most cost-effective solution to the kinds of things that we need, and I very much appreciate that. Are there any public comments?
Yeah, I got one question about that. This is Mr. Lovelace.
Yes.
Called the 7620 Maple Avenue. What is the chances of, uh, with the precast concrete rather than the other methods, of the chemicals reaching into the soil and into our water supply? Do you have any, uh, knowledge on that, or any rates of leakage, or, uh, and also what is the, uh, life expectancy of this salt dome? You know, 'cause, you know, the city of Tacoma, we take great pride in our environment, and also I appreciate, you know, the less bang, the best bang for our buck, but also, uh, we wanna have our credibility taken with a good grain of salt, you know what I mean? So we gotta take in our count, our environment, our public safety, and, uh, the safety of our wildlife and our creek, and also, you know, the effectiveness of the city, and how long will this salt dome last? Thank you.
Thank you, uh, those are great questions. Um, the life expectancy, um, that the manufacturer predicts for the vinyl, uh, top is 30 years. Um, the concrete walls themselves, I think, will probably outlast us, uh, providing they don't get heavily damaged, you know, we don't run our backhoe into it, or back trucks into it, or they do things that would speed, uh, speed the demise, or, you know, create a, create a problem within the construction of the facility itself. Uh, and that certainly will have, um, measures in place to protect against that, to keep, uh, you know, wheel chocks and things around the outside, so vehicles can't bang into the walls. But we anticipate, uh, 30-plus years for the, for the dome top, and the pad and the walls, uh, will, will stay there until they're not deemed not necessary anymore. In terms of the watertightness, or the, um, ability for salt to leach outside of the facility, there's a couple of things that we will have in place to address that. First off is, with the dome top itself, water doesn't get into the area, it's actually fully covered, and the water from rain or anything else that comes near the facility will run off the top and onto the outside of the concrete walls. Uh, water won't be able to come in between the precast sections, because of the way they're fitted together, they basically become impenetrable to water, in terms of the way they, they attach, it's kind of a Lego blocks, for lack of a better, you know, way of defining it. Uh, so we don't anticipate any problem with water coming in through the walls. And again, because of the floor, uh, situation that we have there, the, uh, surface of the salt storage facility inside will be higher than the outside, um, ground, so we won't have a problem with water running into the salt storage area or the, the pad area from outside through the opening or driveway. So, uh, it's been planned with, um, those kind of things in mind, so we can keep water out of the facility, both rainfall that would fall from the sky, as well as seepage that might come from other parts of the, of the Public Works yard, uh, running in that area. We've also located it at a, at a good place in our, uh, moved the location of the salt storage area to try to take advantage of grade, and just keep it, uh, above and outside of, um, an area where we would, it's not at the low point of the yard, it's rather at a higher point of the yard.
Any other comments? All right, if there's no other comments, um, this is a single reading ordinance also. Will the clerk please call the roll? Aye.
Housemember Austin Lane?
Aye.
Housemember Barry?
Aye.
Housemember Clay?
Aye.
Housemember Riley?
Aye.
Housemember Seaman?
Aye.
All right. Um, the single reading ordinance passes. Thank you, Daryl. Uh, the council will take a very short recess and come back for our work session items.
One is an update of the current community legacy fund issues and the other is a discussion of a proposed new 2007 community legacy application. Different but not unrelated.
Thank you. We'll start out first with the existing community legacy award that we received. As I noted in the memorandum, roughly three years ago, the city received a grant, excuse me, a loan of $300,000 from the state through its community legacy program to offset the costs associated with the proposed multi-level parking structure behind the commercial properties on Laurel Avenue. And as we discussed back in April, I believe, for a variety of reasons, primarily the increasing cost of construction materials and delays that were unanticipated in the planning review process, the parking facility has been delayed to an indefinite date. We've looked at a couple of possibilities. After the council discussion last month, we investigated the feasibility of establishing a parking district, which was something that the council had been interested in pursuing. And speaking with that, with our city attorney, it may not make sense to do that at this point in time. The primary purpose of establishing a special district like that is to tax, to generate additional tax revenues, to offset the costs of developing and constructing a facility such as that which was proposed with Mr. Ursiolo. Another alternative that was proposed was to meet with property owners in the immediate area to see if they would be interested in leasing their space and establishing parking lot, a public parking lot on their property. I have done that and given a variety of constraints, i.e. lease obligations with their current tenants, an interest in developing the site within not the immediate future, but the possible near future, and the fact that we would have to, if we were to use state funds to establish a public parking facility on another property, it would have to be for the long term. So I'm assuming we would have to do it at least 10 years, which is the length of the note. And that would delay some of the, or hamper greatly the redevelopment opportunities for that particular property owner. So that is not an option. And frankly, there are no other vacant properties in that immediate area that would address some of the concerns regarding creating additional parking. We went back and spoke with Mr. Ursiolo, who owns the property. And when we last presented before the council, we were looking at making improvements to existing surface lot, lot which you access off of Laurel Avenue. There are roughly 82 parking spaces there. And not doing anything on the lower parcel, which is accessible from Eastern Avenue. And speaking with him, he is open to establishing a second surface lot, which would be accessible off of Eastern Avenue, which would create about 29 or 30 new public parking spaces, or new parking spaces. And then removing all of the signage on both the lot accessible off of Laurel Avenue and the lot accessible off of Eastern, so that anyone could go and park there. They wouldn't necessarily have to be a customer of those particular establishments. The exception to that would be a section of the parking that would be available off of Eastern Avenue, which would be dedicated for employees of the businesses up on Laurel Avenue. It would be the least desirable in this sense, it would be the furthest parking spaces away. So that might address your concerns regarding using the $300,000 to assist in making necessary repairs to the surface lot up on Laurel Avenue and creating new parking facility or parking spaces on the property accessible off of Eastern. I've also spoken to Mr. Ursiolo about your concerns regarding the council's past experience when they were in a similar situation where they basically guaranteed the repayment of a loan to a state by a local business owner, and where they went into default. One of the options we have is for him to release his financial statements to either the state for a review of the cash flow, his projections, or to one of the real estate bankers at SunTrust, or one of the local banks that the city does business with, so that there is someone who is in the business of making business loans to entities, would have an opportunity to look at it and render a decision whether or not this is a sound business plan and if the cash flow is there to support the note. I'd also spoken to him about securing the note. And because in the grant, in the overall project cost, the $300,000 is a fairly small amount, relatively speaking, of the overall loan that might be secured to offset the commercial project, I would propose doing a second position on the note and then doing a personal guarantee with Ursiolo's regarding its repayment. And he's also open to that. So you have a couple of options. One is to reconsider doing a loan to Mr. Ursiolo to create the 39 additional parking spaces off of Eastern Avenue, remove all of the signage on both parking, surface parking lots, which are currently limited to customer parking only. We can also then go back and talk to the state again about, if that's not an option, identifying another project in the immediate area that would work for them. I spoke with the state this morning, just to see where we were in terms of the schedule, and they would like some funds drawn down by September to fulfill our obligations regarding the original agreement, which is a month, two months away?
Go ahead.
I'm still really uncomfortable giving money to one business in the downtown area. I don't like it. And I think, and I've heard from other businesses in the area that they think that the city then is advantaging one business over the other, that there's not a significant gain in parking spaces, and that anything that is gaining will really just support the expansion on the, on the site that's there that's intended, which that person would have to provide anyway, to provide parking spaces for their own expansion. But that said, I got a couple of questions. One is, if we're concerned about the money, why can't we do it as a note against the property? So we can take a lien against the property if the note doesn't get paid. And the other one is, do we have some figures? We're going to pay for this with revenues from meters, right?
No.
No?
The original proposal was to do that. What we're, one of the options you have now is that you would loan the money to the property owner, who would use it to make repairs to the existing surface lot off of Laurel Avenue and do some reconfiguration of that, so we'd end up with a couple more parking spaces. And then also, the funds would be used to construct a second surface lot off of Eastern Avenue, which would create 29 new parking spaces. That would be a loan to that, to Mr. Ursiolo, and he would repay that loan, just like a bank, to the city. And the city would then take those revenues and repay them to the state. So it'd serve as a secondary lender, in a sense.
And how long would these spaces be open to everybody?
It would be for the life of the note.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. You know, as I listen to this, and over the months, we've heard the discussions on this idea, and it really seems like it's a struggle whose time is just not right yet. We haven't really found a graceful way of doing what we had hoped that we might be able to do. And so I certainly would be interested in thinking about some of the other ways that we have felt that we need to do community development with, with community legacy money. And continue to work on this maybe, but not with the money that we have at this point in time. You know, I don't know, we've talked about the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. Is it possible to redirect this money to a project in the area where we have identified a commitment from the council for economic development? Is that a possibility?
We have spoken to the state about that, and the way the agreement is written and the way the application was submitted, they are open to doing other redevelopment activities within the Old Town Tacoma Junction area. So you could do another project that would create, that would revitalize or redevelop that area, but it's fairly narrow. Because we had, I had spoken to them about possibly doing something on New Hampshire Avenue as an alternative. So, and that's, that will not work. So we'd need to keep it in the, sort of, the immediate neighborhood, if you will, as far as a project. The other thing that we need to take into consideration is that this is a loan, it's not a grant. So whatever we use the money for would have to generate a revenue stream so that we could repay it. The loan is for a 10-year period, it's interest only, and...
Yeah. It's just what I hear as you go through it, is it doesn't give me warm, fuzzy feeling that it's a good idea.
I realize that the council is very uncomfortable with this.
Yeah.
Actually, Bruce and I talked to Sarah about this, because we had been asked to meet with Mr. Ursiolo by West Moreland Area Citizens Association regarding some concerns that they had about the development of West Moreland and Carroll. And it seems to me that there's a couple, you know, I'm not sold on this idea, but it seems to me that there's a couple advantages to it. One is that, as I said when we talked about this thing before, my two criteria for how we use this money are, first of all, that somebody else pays it back, that we don't have to pay it back out of city funds, which this would meet. And the other is that it actually increases parking. And to the extent that Mr. Ursiolo does not need to develop the lower lot, and my understanding is he does not, that his, that the project that he's doing doesn't require the parking in the lower lot, to the extent that we use this as an inducement to him to create more parking for the Old Town area, I think it will be helpful in terms of redevelopment. I don't know who you spoke to, Colleen, but I do know that the merchants in Old Town that I talked to, all of them have complained about parking as being their biggest need. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't consider just sort of providing this loan to somebody just sort of randomly. It seems to me it's only worth doing if we get something in return. And if we use it as an inducement to get someone to create more parking than they would otherwise have to create for their own purposes, that might be worth it.
Mayor Porter, may I ask a follow-up question, please?
Sure.
You mentioned using it possibly as an inducement. Is it feasible to include as part of the inducement, access to, alternate access for the West Moreland Avenue project, rather than just having cars?
Bruce and I were...
That would be nice, but...
Bruce and I were tasked by Waco with talking to both of the parties about that. And I have to say, Bruce understands this better than I do, but I have a much greater appreciation of the engineering challenges involved in that prospect than I did before. And Bruce understands it even better than I do. So he might actually know what he's talking about with that, whereas I just, I understand enough to know that there are challenges with that idea.
And I'll just, I'll just say, I'm convinced that it would be very difficult to make work, if not impossible.
And not having anything to do with the willingness of the property owners, although that still could be an issue, but just because of the engineering involved.
So, what are the numbers for what he plans on building?
In terms of the commercial structure?
Commercial structure, yeah. How many parking spaces, and what are the intended uses?
Right now, he's looking at downsizing, if you will, the original proposal, and dropping it by 7,000 feet. So the original proposal was 28,000 square feet with a restaurant, a couple of retail storefronts, and a theater, a community space on the lower level. The new commercial infill development would be 21,000 square feet. It would still include the restaurant, and it would still include retail, commercial storefronts along Laurel Avenue. It would not include the space in the lower level because of the space constraints.
And what's the parking requirement for the 21,000 feet, including the restaurant?
It's about 80.
And he's building an 80-car lot?
No. He has for the entire development, and that includes the existing commercial and the new 21,000 square feet commercial space. If you take all of the parking requirements for those individual uses, you factor in the reduction as a result of the commercial revitalization overlay zone, and the reduction for its proximity to the transit. Parking planning staff have reviewed the site plan on a preliminary basis and indicated that he would need approximately 80 spaces to meet all of his parking needs for his proposed commercial development, as well as the existing retail.
Including a restaurant?
Including the restaurant. And that was part of the conversation. And that was what they indicated. There are a variety of discussions regarding the timing of the, when a restaurant is most likely to be used, compared to a dry cleaner or the bank, et cetera. The way he's proposing to reconfigure it now is that he could get approximately 82 spaces on the existing lot. So as the mayor has indicated, that second surface lot accessible off of Eastern Avenue is not required to fulfill his obligations from the site plan review process and the zoning perspective up on Laurel Avenue. So it would be essentially 29 new parking spaces, 31 if you throw in the two that are up on Laurel Avenue.
I guess, I express extreme skepticism, and the reason why is that many of his current tenants and the tenants all around there that share the existing parking are the ones who keep telling us that there's not enough parking, and wanting us to solve the parking problem. So how we solve the parking problem is not by providing more parking, but by providing a waiver, essentially. Essentially, parking planning will discover that he needs less spaces than what he would normally need, and so he'll fit his project in with what he's already got now. And I just don't get it. I mean, if what he's already got now is fine, why are we even having a discussion about parking in Old Town? It seems to me to be totally and completely counterintuitive. And I don't know how we give him, I'd have a difficult time supporting a waiver for a project like this, knowing the existing shortage of parking, and then approving another project that doesn't provide the amount of parking that's required.
It's not a waiver, in the sense that it's not something that you have to go and ask for. It's the way the ordinance is written, there are X number of parking spaces required in the commercial zone throughout Montgomery County. Now, if you have a commercial overlay zone, then you get a reduction recognizing the pedestrian nature of the community, or the fact that it's a fully developed community. So that number drops down then, and then it drops down again because of its proximity. If you wanted to go below that number, then you would have to ask for a waiver.
Okay, so waivers is the wrong...
Semantics, but...
Waiver is the wrong word, but it's still a formula which goes against what everybody's been telling us we need up there. I mean, my fear is that we do this and approve the development and let the development sit with basically the existing spaces. That's just going to exacerbate the problem. That's just going to exacerbate the problem for his property owners, for his tenants just by themselves. And then the parking that we provide him with this loan is going to just be gobbled up by people using his stuff. I'm not sure it's ever going to benefit the rest of Old Town. Is he going to let anybody who wants to park in his parking area park there?
Yes. It would not be, it would no longer be designated for customers of that strip of commercial properties. It would be open to the community at large. The exception to that would be some spaces on the lower surface lot accessible off of Eastern Avenue, which would be designated for employees of the businesses. And much of that has to do with some lease obligations that he has. So S and A Bs, for example, they would have an area designated for employee parking.
Well, it can't just be a lease obligation because the county requires you to provide so much spaces for employees anyway. I mean, I guess I would love to see the numbers behind it.
What he's proposing to do without the reconfiguration of the lot that already exists satisfies all of those zoning requirements. The new lot, or the second lot off of Eastern Avenue, does not, is not required based on the last conversation we had with parking planning. So he could go ahead and build what he's proposing to build for the commercial infill development with, working within the parameters of his existing parking lot.
Are these plans we could see where we could look at both his numbers, his square footage, his parking calculation?
We can give you that, yes.
I wonder what I'm missing. This seems like a no-brainer to me. If we, if we, we have limited options, what we can do to increase parking in Old Town. We can, we can get pristine and pissy and say, "We're not going to do this," and then parking isn't improved. The money goes back, that's the end of that. If we want to do something with the money and we want to increase parking, there's the obvious place to do it. There is no other place to do it. It sounds like the lot across the street there where the bank used to be isn't available. There's nowhere else to do it. And if he can do his development and not provide this parking, it doesn't help anybody. If we provide the way for this to happen and it doesn't cost us, he's essentially repaying the loan, what's the skin off our backs?
I wanted to say that of the business people that I've talked to, nobody said that they're not interested in more parking. They want more parking, they just don't believe that, from what they understand of the, of the project details, that it's really going to provide more parking that's going to be of any benefit to them, and that there is a benefit to other business owners then that the city's providing, that it's not equally making available to them, and they don't like that. So as I understand it, we get 29 extra spaces?
Correct.
For the $300,000 loan?
Correct.
Which works out to about?
It's about $10,500.
$10,500 per space over the 10 years, so it's a little over $1,000 per space per year?
Correct.
What does it cost to lease a monthly parking space in one of the lots around by the metro station? Does anyone know?
Last time I looked, it was between $50 to $70, I think, a month?
$50 to $70?
A month.
$50 to $70 a month. So considerably less than this scheme provides us.
Yeah, but who's going to pay that?
I think that the issue here is not a question of getting a hold of existing parking, it's that there isn't existing parking.
Yeah.
And if you, and so the more relevant question would be to ask, what does it cost to build a new parking space? And my understanding is the, the cost is $10,000 plus, depending on whether you're doing it service or whatever. That's Terry.
But this is only for 10 years, and it's $10,000 per space, and it only lasted 10 years. And if we took the same money, we could lease spaces over time.
But there's no spaces to lease, that's the problem.
If I...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'd like to clarify. What he's, what he's looking... If you were to proceed with the surface lot off of Eastern Avenue, we would end up with roughly 111 parking spaces. That includes the 82 on the upper level and the 29 below. You would open it up with the exception of those, set aside for employee, designate employee parking like we have here. That would be open to the community at large. Right now, it's signed alternately. So if you're looking at taking the 300 and dividing it by the 29, frankly, the bulk of the funding will go to do some repairs to the existing lot. So you may want, it's not just $300,000 to get 20, or to construct 29 parking spaces.
But that's the additional benefit.
That's the additional benefit.
Available for that.
From a, from a numbers perspective. Another way of looking at it is that you're going to end up with, say, 11 of them are set aside for employee parking. You'll get 100 spaces that previously were limited to those businesses along that one block. Terry?
Sarah, have we talked with the owner of the property, of the parking lot at the corner of Willow and Carroll?
Yes.
About the similar, similar type of arrangement with them?
Yes.
And they were not interested?
It's not an appropriate time for them at this point in time. They're considering some of their options, and they also have some lease obligations for their tenants. So they're not interested in pursuing that.
In pursuing, putting a garage on that site?
Putting... They're not interested in limiting their options for the use of that lot over an extended period of time. So if the city were to enter into a lease with them to establish that surface lot as a parking, public parking space?
But I was saying, a similar type of agreement that we have been discussing with Mr. Ursiola, and that is assistance in building a parking garage that would serve that area.
The cost of building a parking structure for that particular lot would be significantly higher than it is for the lot over on Laurel and Eastern Avenue because it's much flatter, and there, you would have to do some internal ramping, which you don't have to do on the lot that's off of Laurel and Eastern Avenue, which would increase the cost considerably. If I remember the last estimate for the construction of the multi-level facility off of Eastern, it was $2.5 to $3 million. I did not talk to the property owner about having him build a $3.3 million parking garage because I know that, my assumption was the city was not interested in pursuing that level of debt to create a multi-level facility. I just talked to him about leasing the surface lot and putting up meters and opening it up as public parking during the week. Right now, on the weekends, it's wide open, and he's very comfortable with both using it for the farmer's market or customers of other businesses.
Thank you.
I think we will probably have to continue on with this issue. I don't think we're going to be able to come to a conclusion this evening. So why don't we, unless there's additional council questions, why don't we go on to the discussion of the 2000...
I was going to ask her for one little bit of data.
Go ahead.
And that's whether it would be possible to actually survey the business owners anonymously, of course, about how they feel about the parking situation, whether they think this is a benefit or not a benefit.
We can try. The other thing I just want to say is that if there are other businesses in the area that are interested in making improvements or expanding their facility or their business itself, there are other funding opportunities that are available through the state that are specifically targeted for small businesses. So if you have someone that you know of that's expressed concern about this possible scenario, please encourage them to contact our office, and we will make arrangements to get the information to them about some of the options that are available to them as well. And I interrupted somebody else.
Are there other questions, anything else?
The only thing I wanted to say is, having been at the Tacoma Business Association meetings for five years now, this is one of their top priorities, getting additional parking in Old Town. And if it's 29 spaces, that would be a welcome addition. I'm, myself, I'm kind of in the same concerned state about this just being done on one person's property. But if that's the only person who's willing to help us generate more public parking spaces, I think that's what, what we have to work with right now. I would agree with Bruce that this does get us closer to adding public parking, and I don't want to see that opportunity lost. So if, if, if the council is, you know, not really at a point to give direction tonight because people want more information, I think we should bring this back and make sure that it's dealt with before we jettison the idea. In terms of surveying business owners, I think your, any method you use, you're going to miss some people, and I've heard informal comments about people not wanting to see one business, one landowner enriched by public money. And I think that this council has been very alert to that concern and possibility, and we've been discussing it this long because of that. So, you know, but I would like us to find a way to translate this into additional parking spaces. And it doesn't seem that the council's ready to move forwards with that tonight.
I will go ahead and schedule a follow-up on it.
I just wanted to just clarify something. My concern is only that if his project goes forward and it turns out that it generates a demand for more spaces than, so the 29 additional, because it sounds like only 29 additional spaces are being created. That basically, that they're now saying that the 82 that are 80-something that are there take care of all the existing need, and he only needs 29 more.
Yeah, he doesn't have 82 on his, he's going to reconfigure it so he can get 82 on...
Well, I mean, I've seen the lot, they only limit the number of things he can do to reconfigure. But assuming he reconfigures it and he winds up with 82 spaces, my concern is that the project not, not basically eat up all the spaces that are created so that it actually, I mean, it's possible for this thing to make things worse in Old Town rather than better, and I would like to just have some better sense of what those numbers are so we don't exacerbate an already bad situation.
Yeah, I'll make a copy of the site plan.
Okay, if you want to talk to us about a proposal for the 2007 community legacy application?
We were recently notified that the state is, has accelerated its application cycle and is accepting applications at the end of the month for the next round of community legacy funding. It's typically due in November. We have evaluated the projects that we have pending or that have been considered by the city council and would propose that we submit projects or applications for funding for the construction of the improvements to the West Moreland Carroll Avenue intersections, continuation of the streetscape improvements along Carroll Avenue. We had done that at the last application and unfortunately did not receive funding. We're also have proposed, as an suggestion, taking some of the New Hampshire Avenue corridor initiatives and folding that into a small project that would be eligible for community legacy funds. We'd welcome any comments that you have regarding if both of these projects are appropriate or if there's another project you would like us to consider. For the New Hampshire Avenue initiative, depending upon how it ends up being structured, it could be for facade or security improvements, it could be for signage, it could be for sidewalk repairs along the, in the immediate area, street furniture, trash cans, recycling containers, a variety of things. It would not be a very large project just because of the, some of the limitations and some of the recent award, awards that they've made in the past. But we think that we could, it could be attractive.
That sounds great.
Do you, do you have a sense of how much money it would take to reconfigure that intersection?
Our recent cost estimates are $325,000.
$325?
We have taken, we have taken our old cost estimates and... All the engineering work's done, the design work is all done.
I mean, that's what State Highway was proposing.
That's what State Highway has approved. And then we've increased the cost because there's been some time since the estimates were originally submitted. So we have a, we have a fudge factor in there.
So $325. Could we get that from community legacy? I, I'm very concerned. It seems to me, one of the biggest problems with this proposal for the development at West Moreland and Carroll is the access. I was hoping that we could convince various parties to do an access onto Eastern. I'm very dubious about that, having talked to the two parties. But something has to be done. That intersection is incredibly dangerous the way it is now. And it will have two very bad effects if there's a lot of traffic out on West Moreland. One is that it will increase the danger at that intersection. The other is that probably some of the people who live there in an effort to avoid that dangerous intersection will be, will go driving down the other side of West Moreland, thereby generating additional traffic for the neighborhood. So I think I would be interested in following up on something to try and deal with that intersection. Of course, it's a State Highway intersection, and State Highway should be doing it also. Is there anything that we can do to make them pay for it?
We continue to work with the state regarding funding opportunities.
That was a slippery answer.
That was a non-answer, wasn't it? Yeah. We keep talking to them about it, yeah.
There is probably an alternative which falls outside the staff's purview, which is to change the current state administration.
Doesn't guarantee that anybody has money.
No, but it would probably change the places that they spend it. I can think of a certain project I would love to unfund. Could pay up a lot of intersection improvements with that.
That's true. Terry's suggesting it's a bad idea.
Could you speak a little about the, how you would see this money being used along the New Hampshire Avenue corridor?
We haven't worked out a lot of the details because we were hoping, wanted to get a better sense from you in terms of whether or not you'd be supportive of it. There's an interest in doing facade or security improvements, which could be matched by funding from the property owner and then repaid to the state upon the sale of those particular properties. There's also, on a smaller scale, doing some things like getting trash cans and recycling containers and installing those along where the bus shelters are. Because right now, there aren't any, and there's a great need for that. I'm doing some repairs to the sidewalks because some of the sidewalks are in great disrepair. We could do some of the signage. There's also a possibility using some of the funding for operating expenses, which would be to offset some of the consulting and marketing proposals that we've included in FYI 7.
I would just say that I understand and recognize the difficulties we face in the Old Town area of West Moreland and Carroll. But that, again, with the, at least responsibility, if not the money, of the state to help to resolve those problems, I think that I would focus the money where our priority is, and that is on the New Hampshire Avenue corridor.
I would be happy with either one of them, actually.
And my only concern, or one of my concerns, is that when I look at the project descriptions under, you know, all the other jurisdictions that have projects, I see things that look like planned out, targeted, this is what we're going to do, you know, seven buildings in a strip, assemble these properties for demolition and reconstruction. And that sounds a lot different to me than spend $X hundred thousand on the New Hampshire Avenue. Because anybody who says, "What exactly do you mean?", we're going to be hard put.
No, we'll have to do a budget with specific items. And what we're planning on doing, if it meets with your approval, is to take some of those same proposals that we had presented to the council when you're going through and doing your priorities and developing your budget for FYI 7, taking those same items and using that to develop a budget and an actual proposal. It would not be a blanket, give us $100,000 to make New Hampshire Avenue better, yeah. Though I would like the money that way.
Well, since we have to pay it back, I'd prefer to know that it was targeted.
That was, that's a good question. Are we talking about a loan or a grant?
We're looking at doing, if we end up doing a facade, if it makes sense to do a facade or a security improvement program, it would be... a facade or a security improvement program, it would be repaid by the person actually benefiting from that. With some of the smaller things, like trashcans, recycling things, we would propose that those be awarded on a grant basis. So we have flexibility that we didn't have when we first applied for the funding for the parking garage. They've gone from everything is a total grant to no more grants, to give us a creative funding stream, recognizing that some projects can be repaid, others cannot.
So if you were to do the expensive street project that you mentioned, is that going to fall under the, you will repay us for this?
I would propose it as a grant.
But will, will they give it to us as a grant or more likely to give it to us as you will pay it back?
Based on the conversations with the state, because there's not an obvious revenue stream for streetscape improvements, a grant is an appropriate request.
Do they ever give matching grants where you, you get money and then that money is matched by another party?
That would be part of this, part of the, it's part of the application. The more this, your application is stronger, the more dollars you can leverage. So for like the facade program, we would do at a minimum, a dollar-for-dollar match, which would make it an attractive option. By tying it into the New Hampshire Avenue corridor initiative, you have money included in the budget that you're, will be considering again in a couple of weeks. We can use some of those dollars as match.
Okay. What is the council? Do we need to make a decision between those two or can you?
No, we can actually submit both. We can submit both. Based on what I'm hearing, both are important. We do have to prioritize them. So I'm going to make the assumption that the New Hampshire Avenue corridor is the number one priority. And the reality is it'd probably get funded before the Carroll Avenue, just because we're not looking at the same number of dollars.
I'm also concerned about staff time in preparing these proposals. How much time are we looking at? I mean, it...
David did it Friday afternoon.
Pardon?
A lot of it is already done.
Okay. I mean, if you're happy with that, but I think, you know...
The one, the one project we did last year, or a couple of months ago, so that's already finished. We just need to update the numbers. And the New Hampshire Avenue one, we'll be able to pull a lot of information that we prepared for the council when you considered your priorities. And with the recent bus tour.
And I would certainly say my priority would be the New Hampshire Avenue corridor, again, because that is a stated priority of this council.
And my priority is both.
Can't have it, though.
Okay. Let's move on to the next item. I'm going to suggest, we have the staff recommendations for rent stabilization ordinance. Since I think that the item number 12 is relevant to this, I'm going to ask the staff to reverse the order of 12 and 11, and that we talk about the proposal for the contract for services first and then about rent stabilization.
The council was asked to consider entering into a contract with a gentleman named Calvin Barr, who is very experienced in the legislative aspects of rent stabilization or rent control. And to assist in finalizing the language, or developing and finalizing the language for any revisions that the council wishes to see with the rent stabilization ordinance. Do you have any specific questions regarding his credentials or how he was identified? Ken Sigmund is able to answer that. We're also looking at this as being a sole source provider. Frankly, there are not, there are not a lot of experts that are, that support rent stabilization or rent control. And Mr. Barr is one of the few that we've been able to find with the credentials and the experience working with municipalities at a variety of levels.
Can you tell us how you identified him, Ken?
I came across him when I was doing some research regarding some allegations regarding the constitutionality of our own statute. He was cited in some different court cases. And I just did a little research on him on the internet, that he's still active, actively working for several localities in California, which is nowadays primarily where you'll find rent control statutes. And he does work on behalf of the municipalities. He has experience drafting legislation for several cities. He also assists in the various ways that they administer their policies. He helps some locations calculate annual increases. He testifies in court to defend their ordinances. And I also, I read his article about drafting rent control legislation. And he really has a firm grasp of, I think rent control often has, is more a lot, more so than other laws, has a tendency to have unintended consequences. And he has enough experience to see what policies have what consequences and, you know, what alternatives are better than others. So I haven't seen anybody with a comparable level of knowledge of rent control.
Have we actually spoken to any of the municipalities or anybody in the municipalities that he's worked for?
I spoke with one, I believe it was Santa Monica. I spoke with the attorney in their, in their city attorney's office, who spoke highly of him. And that's actually who put me in contact with him.
Actually, I liked his dissertation topic myself, which is explaining crises in rental housing construction, myth and schizophrenia in policy analysis. I thought he probably understands this whole subject very well. Myth and schizophrenia would describe it pretty well in terms of the reactions. Could you then perhaps explain in a little bit more detail exactly what you propose to have him do?
I think our thought was that we would get as much policy direction from you as we can and then provide that to him. And we feel probably be better for him to start fresh. And, you know, rather than working with what we have, which I think has kind of been built upon over the years, and as we try to make different tweaks to it, I think we probably would want him to start over. Certainly, we can tell him the policies that we want to keep, but probably be more efficient and we'd come up with a better product if he started.
So what would he start with? What was your intention that he, that he start? Where is the place at which he would start?
I think he would, I mean, certainly he would, he would review what we have now. But most importantly, he would, he would start with the policy goals, which I think, you know, I think we can articulate it at this point.
So I'm, the reason I'm asking that is I'm trying to think, in terms of the next item, what, what the council would need to give him if we were to hire him in order to make his work most useful?
I think it would just be a memo of, of what we want to do, how...
In other words...
I think some of the, we've talked about some of the, we've broken it out into different areas and gotten your input as to how we want to proceed. And I think...
So if we gave him sort of policy goals in each area, that was where you envisioned that he would start?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. You know, I think it's a great idea and certainly looking at the information that we've, that you've provided us, it looks like this is a good candidate to help us with some advice and guidance in the recodification. But we heard earlier the suggestion that maybe we're getting the cart before the horse. And in a sense, I feel maybe we're getting the cart before we've even bought the horse. I just wonder whether we have really articulated those policy goals real well and whether we, you know, there have been some, some kind of big concepts that changes in the whole approach to the affordable housing that have been discussed between council members that at various times. And I don't know whether those are really on the table at this point or not. But if they are, it seems like there's more work needs to be done before we need somebody to come in and, and talk with us.
One of the, if I could just...
And I guess my bottom line is, do we have a timeline of what we're really working on or how we're, how we're moving forward?
One of the things, when we did this the last time in the, sometime in the 90s, I don't remember, Mark probably remembers, we had the assistance of that...
Rich Washington Law Clinic and Ben Hess.
Right. And they were extremely helpful because they were able to help us sort of define down the means to get to the ends that we were trying to reach. And it was sort of an iterative process. I think we started with sort of a general sense of where we wanted to go. And then as we worked with them, we were able, using the skills and the knowledge that they had, sort of work it down. So I'm not sure that we can sort of come up with, this is exactly what we want, and then hand it over. My sense is that there's probably some back and forth that would need to be done. And I guess that the main concern that I have is the sense that I get from these materials, that the notion is that he's over there and we're over here, and we hand him a bunch of stuff and he, and then gives it back, and that's what we want. I, based on our experience with them, I'm not sure that's the way it would happen.
Good. I guess I see him as potentially a valuable resource, where the guy from the Law Clinic was. Because we've talked about some things we'd like to do without knowing what the mechanisms would look like in a law to do it. And I'd be interested to know, you know, if we, for example, if you wanted to do an energy surcharge, does he have experience creating a formula for that? Does he have experience or, you know, what would he think of the complexity of completing, you know, some kind of tiered, you know, structure for rents? I guess, I guess what I would hope is that maybe in the beginning, if he used something like this, that he would be able to answer some of the questions that I can't answer just from looking at these sheets where, you know, you say somebody does this, they do this in this jurisdiction, and here's a one sentence description of what they do without any real sense of, of how that affects people. I mean, I've been, I just got economic data tonight on, you know, the income spreads in the city and who, you know, who these people are. And I think that we ought to know that, you know, somebody who can look at, propose changes in law and say, if you do this, this is what the impact's going to be on people. Because you're not just changing something written on a piece of paper. You're changing things that are going to affect people's lives. I was really concerned when SADA gave me some preliminary numbers that indicated out of 6,700 households, almost 1,000 of the households had incomes of less than $15,000 a year. And that's kind of sobering when you start to think about, you know, what we're being asked to undertake. So I wouldn't mind having some, some expert advice from somebody who's dealt with this in California. They've had, you know, and I know in Santa Monica and in Berkeley where the sentiments on the council may be more pro rent control, but they're constrained by what the state legislature has laid out for them to do, that they've had to balance, you know, the pressures and the constraints that the legislature put on them and the desire to try to achieve some good end. And I'd be interested to talk to somebody who's tried to balance those two things. You know, how do you balance what the landlords want? And how do you still try to achieve the good end that those jurisdictions set out to do? So I'd be interested in the person's input and start off as a resource. And then, I don't know whether we do the codification or whether you ask them to draft it. That may be obvious at that point. But I'd certainly be willing to have this person come out here and talk to us.
Colleen?
Yeah, I think at this time, I wouldn't support selecting this person as a sole source provider to do the recodification. I guess we could hire him at $180 to be our person who's our expert consultant as an advocate for rent control. And I would hope that we would find a balanced approach for getting comments from experts in legislative analysis and then drafting laws. You know, Berkeley, I think, has the most restrictive rent control in the country. I remember when I looked through the pieces that our staff provided for us, that had all of the things, they, if there was a restriction to be had on it, they had it. And it was, it was the most restrictive that you could come up with for each of those areas. And, and so I wouldn't really support having him be the person who, who does the recodification. And I agree with what Carrie said and what other folks have said here tonight, is that, you know, we have more work to do, I think, before we jump straight into the redoing the whole ordinance. And I would like to see us move forward on that. And I also want to say that all of the suggestions, pretty much every single suggestion that I have seen from the staff has been excellent and really points in the direction that, you know, I think we want to move within the existing parameters of the rent control that we have. And I don't want to see the months of conversation that we have had and the hours and days and weeks of input that the staff has put into this be thrown out the window as we then hand over some general policy descriptions to a rent control advocate to rewrite our legislation.
Can I ask a question as a follow-up? Is it your sense that we would be using him as an advocate? Or is it your sense that we would be letting him know what we were trying to do and asking him to facilitate it?
Right. We would just let him facilitate what we were trying to do.
Okay. Terry?
Thank you. Again, I don't think that what Councilmember Eldridge stated is significantly different from what I was trying to say. I think it's a timing issue, though, in that I really think that before we start thinking about who do we need to advise us, we need to know what it is we want to accomplish. And so I would just advocate that we, maybe we have done it. It's been a long time we've been discussing rent stabilization. But I think identifying the policy goals of this council is a, is a good first, first step that we should accomplish before we think about bringing somebody in to advise us on how to attain the goals.
Willie, you'll get your chance in just a minute. Mark?
I thought that, you know, in, in the discussions, for example, there was a lot of agreement on dealing with energy surcharges. So if a person had such experience using him to say, this is the way you craft the law that deals with energy surcharges, I mean, it's, I mean, if the purpose of the law is to ensure that, that they're covered in, in subsequent rents, this isn't a subjective thing. This is an objective thing. And I'd like to know how a person, you know, if they have the experience of writing that, how the, you know, what their suggestions would be to guide us. But I think that's a discreet question we could ask them. We've talked about the frustration with the hardship petition and the absurdly cumbersome way which ours apparently is written. And trying to deal with, you know, what's, what is a reasonable net operating income. And they have no doubt dealt with that. You know, it appears to be that other jurisdictions have less complicated formulas than we have. So it would be worthwhile to have him, I think, you know, give us some input as what, you know, what are sensible guidelines, what would the law look like, for us to have some discussion about something that's actually fleshed out in front of us instead of, I think, very vague and amorphous right now. And I think we, the council could probably develop some other areas where we're going to want focus. And it would be nice to use this person to say, okay, this is how it's been dealt with. And this is what the legislation would look like and this is what it would do. This is what I would, you know, I think there's some areas we do agree on. And those are places I think, you know, that this person would be very helpful.
Terry?
It seems to me that the council should set some goals. And I hope that we will talk about the timeline for coming to some policy goals.
will talk about the timeline for coming to some policy goals. The mayor has suggested in the past that it would be between now and the August recess and that seems achievable given where we are in the discussion. I, I would propose that this contract for services be discussed after that time. And I appreciate that you went to the trouble of finding someone who you felt was a fair and balanced expert on rent control and had been relied on by people to give sound advice. But I, I'm uncertain as to what we would task this person to do. So I'm glad for the information right now, but I think that approving a contract for services should definitely wait until we're closer to the, the end of July when we can give them clear direction and make sure that they're the best person for that job.
Just for clarification, the purpose of the, having this on the agenda this evening was to let you know what we've been thinking about. We've made some, there's been some brief discussions and we've been going through and talking about the rent stabilization ordinance in terms of, we'd like to bring someone in who has some expertise in this area to assist in the recodification. Our purpose this evening was to present to you that individual and to sort of clarify our expectations in terms of, our thoughts in terms of how we might proceed. The actual reading, it would be requiring a two-reading ordinance if I understand correctly, and that would be at a later date. So tonight you're not necessarily approving the contract with this individual, but you're giving us information in terms of whether or not you think it's an appropriate individual and how we can proceed from here. As far as the actual tasking of the recodification with Mr. Barr, frankly, you guys have come to an agreement on, on many of the broader concepts that we, that staff has proposed. There, there are very few, I think, that there hasn't been any discussion about it all. And what we're hoping we can do is take that, those areas where you've come to consensus, the energy surcharge, for example, looking at doing capital improvements and limiting them to major capital improvements, continuing with security improvements that result in rent increase petitions, things like that. What we're hoping to do is be able to package that information up and forward that over to this individual so that they can take that and look at what some of the options might be to, to reach your overall goal, which, as you've identified in earlier meetings, to provide affordable housing and to maintain the diversity of, of the housing stock that's available to residents in DeComer Park. So that's, that's kind of where we're coming from in terms of entering or giving you this information this evening.
I think it's, I think it would be very helpful to do. I think my, my sense in thinking this person would be very helpful, it doesn't mean that we're necessarily finished with the discussions that we need to have, but just based on our past experience, I think having a person who is an expert in this field help us was very useful last time and I'm, I think it would be again. So I would be very much in favor of that. Certainly the council can decide, you know, at a later point whether we want to go forward exactly with the proposal and exactly with this person, but I think this is a good idea and the person certainly seems like he's got the required background.
I guess one more thing, just to, so you understand our thinking. I think we, we decided, Steph and I, that we were interested in, in having this person work on our policy is that we, we realized that if we start tweaking things, if we, for example, grant a energy surcharge, then that's going to, that needs to be counterbalanced by what we do with the hardship petition process and that relates to the capital improvement process. And we got to the point where we weren't sure if we could say with confidence that we could come up with a cohesive package that's fair. We, you know, we wouldn't, don't even know if it would be biased towards the landlord or biased towards the tenants. So I'm hoping somebody with a lot of experience with differing policies would be able to help us come up with something cohesive. So, you know, I'm not sure how much detail, you know, not sure if we come up with too many detailed requirements, if that, if that's going to make his job more difficult or, or make it difficult to come up with a cohesive policy. So that's why we think more general policy, policies of city may be, maybe more helpful if we end up working with it.
Yes. And I, and I think we have that item next on our agenda.
It just sounds to me like it might be useful to go back to him and get him to qualify his expertise. Is he an advocate for rent control or is he an expert on it? Is he going to be advising us in a way that the council could go in whatever direction we so decide in the next few weeks? Or is he really assuming that he's working towards a certain goal by coming on board? That, that might allay some of the concerns that council members have about this particular person. Does that seem like a reasonable thing to-
Do you have a sense of that, Ken?
I, I get the impression that he's just interested in coming up with the policy that, that for an ordinance that reflects what we want to do. When, when I spoke with him, I mean, he sounded genuinely excited about it, so, without the idea of, you know, being creative and figuring, figuring out how we do what we want to do.
Well, for instance, with the Berkeley, California rent control ordinance, was he the architect of that? Was he an advocate for that? Was that something he fully approved of? Has he defended it in court? I mean, what's, what can you glean from the testimony he's provided?
I don't, I haven't seen his testimony. I don't, I don't know what role he played in the, in the-
So that's the only, you know, concrete thing that I think we could ask him about? What's your background on this particular policy? You know, where do you stand? Do you have a position on it? Or are you just a consultant who happens to live in Berkeley and you might be familiar with the Berkeley policy, but not a, you know, defender of it or a, an opponent of it either way?
One of the things I'd encourage the council to do if you have a moment at a later date is to go through Mr. Barr's resume and looking at the publications. They're fairly, they're, they're clearly not advocating for or against rent stabilization. When I've gone through and looked at some of the publications that are available on the internet, for example, it's really quite clear where that particular individual who has drafted that specific monograph stands in terms of opposing or in support of rent stabilization. And when you go through some of the titles on the publications that Mr. Barr has authored, probably one of the things that comes across is-
That was part of our packet, Sarah, so that is something we have gone through.
Maybe not.
If you have a professional opinion about-
I don't read the French one.
But, you know, because you've looked at some of the actual articles, please feel free to share that with us.
I've read some of his testimony and frankly, I think Mr. Barr is, is as neutral as one might get based on his experience with rent stabilization and the fact that a majority of the other folks that are out there are very strongly in opposition to the stabilization of rent control.
My guess would be that the governing body in Berkeley is the same as we are, that they set policies and they don't hire somebody who tells them what policy they should adopt. They probably are doing the same thing, they probably do the same thing that we do, which is to hire people with expertise and then just set the policy themselves. So my, my sense would be that the council is interested in this, but not willing to make a commitment yet to hiring this individual. In terms of the assistance that can be provided at this point, would it be helpful to, I guess the question would be, would it be helpful for us to give you a more definitive answer now or can we do that as we continue on with the discussion?
Regarding the proposed contract?
Right.
We're fine right now.
Okay.
We'll bring it back to you at a later date.
All right, good. Okay, now, here is your opportunity to provide policy input to the staff. How would the, there's, there's quite a few areas here. How would the council like to deal with it? Shall we pick out, I mean, we've already talked about a number of these. We haven't talked about everything. Do you want to pick out one or two things to start with? Do you want it to start at the beginning and you start running through? How does the council want to proceed?
Is this the time that you said we will be discussing policy goals?
Yes.
Or just the policies that are in our packet?
No, this is-
What's it, what are the goals of our-
Well, I would say this is, this is where we need to start. And once we get through this structure, then if there are issues that are not addressed in this structure, then they should be added on.
That would be one way we could do it. It might also be possible if the council, if members of the council have a policy issue that isn't, and I should say, what I'm looking at is I'm looking at this memo, the recodification options that the staff has provided, which basically goes through our current law and lays out what we have, what the staff has recommended, and then any additional things that the council has thrown into the mix. If there are things that the, that the council would like to discuss that are not listed there, I would be open to having those put on the table also. Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Yeah, I was thinking, when I was thinking of policy goals, I was thinking more of the nature of what are we trying to accomplish with our affordable housing within DeComer Park, such as establishing a, a level of how many, how many residents of the city that we hope would, would be needy for affordable housing and that we would want to provide affordable housing for, rather than just saying that, well, we want to, we want to have affordable housing, but that, but our goal might be to provide affordable housing for, you know, 5,000 county residents who are below self-sufficiency level. So, and those are the kind of things I was thinking of when I was thinking of goals.
So you were thinking of something that would-
You say, what are we trying to accomplish?
So you were, so you were thinking of, of, for example, setting rents at a certain level? I mean, how do you mean helping? How do you-
That, no, I'm saying that, that is a way of attaining something, but what is it we're trying to attain? That, right now, we say we want to have affordable housing, but affordable housing for who? And how much affordable housing? You know, we're, we're, is it, is it that all rental housing should be quote affordable? And what does affordable mean? Does it, is it available to everyone regardless of their need? Or is there, and that may be a way of accomplishing what we want to do, but what we really want to do isn't to say that we can provide low rents for any people who make $100,000 a year. We may do that as a collateral benefit to attaining a goal, but our goal really is, I think, to provide a stock of housing that is below market rate for county residents who are below a certain threshold of income. And I just wonder if we've given any thought to, you know, what is it that we really hoping to attain through our affordable housing program?
If I remember correctly, the Affordable Housing Program is a, a much larger document containing goals and objectives. Isn't that the case? So this discussion to me seems much more constrained. It's really just about how does rent stabilization fit into that, that plan? And we're, we're just trying to revise this so that it does contribute to those goals and objectives that are part of that affordable housing plan. So in some ways, this is not big picture. This is recodification, the nuts and bolts of it. It seems to me that the way that the staff has presented it to us, I see issues on the very first page and, and then some. And we need to make sure that we clear that up if the council is in agreement that those are problems and we want them to be reflected differently.
Colleen?
Well, it seems like getting at both of the previous council members' comments is that we have different ideas, I think, about what rent stabilization maybe should be doing as well, though, because I think you brought out, the question is, is it, is it to provide below-market rate housing that's accessible to anybody who knocks on the landlord's door? Or are we, are we trying to be more targeted with it so that we spend the resource of the affordable housing that's being generated on the folks who need it the most? And I would add to that, how will we know when we've been successful? So that as we set up our program, we have some way of knowing whether or not we're being successful in that sense, if, if, if we go with a targeted program in particular. We know what our rents are and we know what the, what the median cost is and we have some general census information about the renters and their incomes. But if we went to a targeted program where we were looking to hit people in, in low-income ranges and, and actually provide affordable housing mechanisms for those folks, you know, how do we know that we had, we had achieved that target?
I just want to say that my criteria in going through this recodification process is twofold. I'd like to see whatever we end up with be a simpler process, a simpler part of our code, more easily understood. I think it's impossible for anybody who doesn't put in hours and hours and days of going through this to, of our existing law to figure out all the ramifications. And I think we've heard a number of instances where there have been unintended consequences about how it's interpreted and enforced as opposed to the legislative intent of what happened when it was revised the last time. And I think the second criteria is that it be more targeted than it is. I think just more, more broadly having this policy that we have now is not in the best interests of an affordable housing policy, so I want to see it more targeted.
One of the things that we haven't mentioned is ease of administration and cost of the city administering it. One of the things that I've done all my life is I've done policy analysis on anti-poverty programs. And I can tell you the more, you can spend a great deal of money targeting without getting much increase in targetedness. And I think that we, we want to think about how much money we spend administering a program compared to what kind of benefit you get out of it. I would agree with Bruce. I think that the rent control could be simpler than it is and I think that would be one of my goals also. But I also think that not spending all of our funds measuring would be a goal also. And not spending any of them actually making housing affordable.
I agree with you, Mayor Porter. As an example of, of what I was talking about
with goals is that the, if the goal is to provide a, a certain number of, of housing for, you know, certain income level of residents, then knowing that goal, we might think of different ideas for how to actually target that population that we're hoping to serve. Just a couple of points I want to make and then I'll let others speak. One thing I wanted to mention tonight is that because I am the owner of a single rental unit, when we get to the, to the staff recommendations here, I will have to recuse myself from that discussion of who's in and who's out on rent stabilization. Another little background that I want to mention- Another little background that I want to mention is that I, you know, 95% of my constituents are renters, okay? And so I do, I will come here to this, to this bench with that bias. But I'm certainly interested in, in what's best for the city across the board. And then the other thing I wanted to throw on the table that is not in the staff recommendations, it's a, it's an idea I've talked briefly with Councilmember Elrich about, and that is, if we, thinking about the idea of trying to be more targeted in our provision of affordable housing for low-income residents, one idea that I would like to suggest, and again, I'll follow the style of some of the previous suggestions and not give specific percentages, I'll use some percentages as the example. But I was going to suggest that, that maybe we talk about a level of vacancy de-control to provide a, and I'll use example percentages, okay? At 10% of the units would be allowed, allowed to go to market rate, while at the same time, a percentage, and maybe it's 10%, maybe it's 20%, of units that would be in the most restrictive level of rent increases, and that those would, that the tenants would only be eligible to rent those apartments if they were on the HUD waiting list for Section 8. And what that would do is actually target a population without incurring any expense of qualifying people by our city staff.
I guess, I look at this a little bit differently. I look at the purpose of the city's rent stabilization law primarily not just to protect the individuals who are there now, but to protect the supply of housing, which is rapidly dwindling in the D.C. area, and has been dwindling for some time now. And you only need to look at the worksheets that staff provided tonight to look at changes in the, what's so-called fair market rent in Montgomery County or the Washington Metro area in five years, and most of the categories, the fair market rent has gone up over 40%. And it didn't go up evenly over all that time. There were some years when it went up very little, and some years when it jumped enormously. And we're, and we're talking about changes primarily due to the market. There weren't the huge energy spikes back then. There weren't huge anything spikes back then. This was, this was the change in the D.C. market. I mean, it wasn't that long ago when apartments in Silver Spring were offering rents from, at the level of two years earlier, or rent for 12 months and get one month free. And that was the market. And then the market changed, and when the market changed, and the desire to live, and then, and the desirability of apartments changed in Montgomery County, which is sort of a phenomenon in Montgomery County. It weren't like Arlington and some jurisdictions in Virginia where apartments were more accepted forms of living. The demand for apartments went up, and the price of apartments went up. And it has significantly priced people out of, out of the market in Montgomery County. So I look at, you know, part of what we're trying to do here is to preserve units for affordability. It's clear in the data, and again, this is 2000 data, but, you know, I'll say what I, you know, said before with a little bit more refinement. 29% of the households, renter households, earn less than $20,000 a year. It's 30, almost, basically 30% of the people earn less than $20,000 a year. 56% of the people earn less than $35,000 a year. Those people are going to have a hard time making fair market rents in Montgomery County. They're going to have an impossible time if the city adopts a program where de-control results in the so-called fair market rents being the norm for everyone. So, I'm, I'm concerned about any kind of de-control that gets us to levels of rents that make it so people will not be able to, people with limited means will be able to live in Tacoma Park. I have a great deal of difficulty with, with targeting for that reason, because a landlord can solve the targeting problem by simply renting to people who have bigger paychecks. And then they no longer qualify for targeting, they no longer qualify for lower rents, and landlords can solve this problem simply by renting up their apartment buildings to people with higher incomes. And that, that I think would be, it would be a mistake for the city to open up a loophole that wide. I think that people have raised legitimate concerns about, for example, energy costs, and people have raised legitimate concerns about the hardship, what we call the hardship petition. But when the hardship petition was put in place, it was meant to deal with landlords who were not able to make, not able to make money on their property, that the property expenses had gotten so high that they couldn't make money. And when we crafted that provision, it was supposed to be the provision that enabled landlords to, to earn a decent return on their property. And I'm willing to revisit that and the formula, and to certainly simplify that greatly so that it does what it was meant to do. And it's clearly, clearly not doing it now. It's clearly not suitable for a number of circumstances that people have brought to our attention. And I think that is, that is worth dealing with, and it will certainly have consequences on higher rents, but I'll also note, as this council knows, that COLTA has not been reluctant to grant some pretty hefty rent increases in the case of both hardship and capital improvement petitions. So, the system does work when it's used, but I think the way we've structured it has made it very difficult to be used, and that's, and that certainly wasn't our intention. And it's not my intention to keep it that way, so I think that's, that's a place where we should make some serious revisions to the law. I'm, I'm not averse to some kind of control mechanism that allow vacant units to reach some percentage of market, but based primarily on income levels that they would be affordable to. And I've looked at the numbers, and they would produce far more substantial rent increases than our current law allows, but they would not allow rents to go to the fair market value. And I'm looking for a place in between so that at the end of the day, the landlords do get more money, but at the same time, the bulk of the housing remains affordable to people. It, it looks like, from the data, that over a third of the people, around a third of the people in this city are already paying an exorbitant amount of their incomes for rent. And I'm not interested in making that situation all that much worse, but there are people who are paying relatively low portions of their incomes for rent. And based on that, it seems that we have somewhat, some room to give. And if providing some balance in the buildings between units which are more constrained than units that are less constrained, then if we focus that on vacancy, will produce balances in the buildings that will provide a little bit more mixed income and more revenue for the landlords, but still retain the general character of providing affordable units in Tacoma Park. I don't want the city to get into a massive regulatory process where we're interviewing everybody, where we're looking at the income data on every tenant every year to prove whether they, they should be in that unit or not. That will cost us a fortune. And I think if you look at the fair market, fair market rents and start doing calculations for how much the city would have to subsidize low-income people in order to afford the fair market rents, if they were to stay at 30% of income, that would also cost the city an enormous fortune. It's just not possible to do. So, I'm looking for someplace in between.
I just wanted to let my colleagues know that after hearing the, the goals that you've put forward, I am very comfortable with the three that I believe many people indicated for our policy direction on recodifying the rent stabilization code. The three goals that I heard were to simplify the code, to focus on low-income renters, and to implement something, well, to, to pass something that's easy for the city to administer, so ease of administration. I don't know if there were others that people wanted to make sure were in there, but those three seem to me to cover a fair amount of territory, and I think they could get us where we need to go in, in the discussions we have between now and August.
Let me, thank you, Joy. Let me just follow up on a couple of things that were said earlier. One thing is, fair market rents are sort of an odd standard. I know that they're very commonly used for a lot of programs, but the problem with fair market rents is that they're set as a percentile of existing rents. And so that if you have escalation in rents in the area, fair market rents are just going to rise because you're not providing affordable housing. That doesn't mean that they're more affordable, it just, they're set at the, what, the 40, 45th percentile?
50th in this area.
Correct. But what, when they go through and they do the data analysis, they eliminate all of the subsidized apartments, and they eliminate all of the new constructions.
Right. They also eliminate anything that's not, doesn't meet code. I know. But I mean, my point is, though, if you, if you have inflationary increases in rents, fair market rents are going to go up because they're set as a percentage of essentially the spread. They're set at the 45th percentile, I think. Yes. So, that's one concern. The other concern is, we've talked about affordable for who, which I think is a good question. Some years ago, I can't remember, two or three years ago, I was working with some folks who were looking at the self-sufficiency standards, which is higher than poverty. And they came up with a self-sufficiency standard for Montgomery County for a family of four, which was over $50,000 a year. So, I mean, there are different standards for affordability, and it's not, people sometimes talk about affordability as if it were clear. I mean, we're also using the 30% standard, which, when I started in the field, it was 25%. And when we went up to 30%, that was a political decision, not a, it was a political decision because it wanted to make fewer people eligible for the programs. So I'm not convinced that 30% is the right standard either. The, the point that I'm making is that there, if we're treating it as if there is, there are hard and fast rules that we can look to, there, there really aren't. Pretty much everything in this field is, has some policy decision built into it. And we can decide to follow it or not, but there's no magic answer that the experts all agree on.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Will you next?
I refuse. Go ahead. I defer to you. I cede my time.
The data that we're looking at now is from 2000, and we have 500 fewer rental units at least than we had then. And that has shifted us from a city, I think, with 3,700 or so rental units to a city that now has 3,200 or fewer. So we actually, assuming that those units have shifted into homeownership, have now become a city where we have more homeowners than we have renters, probably for the first time in many, many, many years. And that shift has really occurred over the last two, the bulk of it, over the last two to three years. And, and that's a, that's a significant change, and I think that, Mark, it also calls into question the data that we have and how really truly valid it is, which isn't to say that there's, you know, a good or a bad quality to it, just that it's, it's not going to be accurate for the purposes that we have, and it's not going to be accurate for comparing 2,000 income data then to the housing units and the housing stock and the rents that we have today. In response to something that you had said, Terry, about using the HUD waitlist from Montgomery County, when those folks come into the system, I believe that they then get, then they get rent qualified, so they wouldn't already be qualified at that point because you may be on the list for quite a long time. So, you would still have to do that qualification process. Although, I do know that there are some places where, once somebody's qualified, they don't have to get re-qualified again for three years. And in some places, if you're a renter and your income goes down, you can go in and ask to get a recertification, but if your income goes up, you might not necessarily go and get recertified. So, they do it with different timelines. So, depending on how many people we had that were actually qualified, if we had 1,000 people that were qualified, we might actually only be recertifying 330 of those people in, in a given year, which is something to consider. About the issue of targeting and why I think it is important in our situation where we're using rent stabilization and rent control as our primary mechanism for delivering affordable housing, is because in the experience that I've had in public policy, and it's primarily been related to housing, is that there, I can't think of another public policy where we say, this individual landlord or this individual taxpayer is going to transfer X amount of dollars that, that they have available to them to this other citizen here. In most cases where we do poverty initiatives or we do housing initiatives, we have a pool of people who are all spending a little bit of money. So, when we do food stamps, I don't say, Sarah, every month, I'm going to assign you to give $100 to Ken because he needs it more than you do. And I don't say, Sarah, I'm going to assign you to give $100 to Ken because I've decided that we're going to redistribute money, and I'm not going to make Ken qualify for it. I think this is, really, it's a rare program where we say, this landlord, this one family is going to transfer a lot of money to this other family. And then we don't put a qualification on it when we do the transfer. I have big issues with that. It's not that I mind affordable housing. I don't even mind having our rental housing stock pay for affordable rental housing or assistance for people to, to live and have, and have the capacity to have affordable rents. I don't mind that. But I do have a big problem with this issue of how do we, how do we make that transfer? And the equity in a society where we make that transfer from one individual to another, or where we, as, as a group of policymakers, will say, well, we're going to decide that this one individual is going to have their money transferred to this other individual. I, I have, I have big ethical issues with that, with me personally. I want to say also that there was a comment that was brought up about the landlords will solve the problem of targeting by renting to people with bigger paychecks. Well, the landlords have solved the problem that they have of not having enough money to put money into repairs, to paint their places, to do upkeep to places, by renting to people with bigger paychecks, because now, they have no incentive to rent to somebody who's low-income. They have a great incentive to rent to the person who makes the most amount of money possible, because then they're least likely to have to do the repairs. And they know that somebody who's bringing in $100,000 a year in exchange for getting a lower rent can afford to make those repairs. And so I think in essence, one of the unintended side effects of the policy that we have right now is actually to not encourage renting to the very people that we want to provide assistance to. If the numbers that Mr. Hessel provided to us are true, and we are actually transferring $1 million a month from individual landlords to individuals in our community who may or may not need the assistance, that's a powerful lot of money that if we took just a small percentage of that, $1 million a year, and had that available to provide to the 1,000 people that Mark has identified from the 2,000 census that would really need significant assistance, I, I think we could afford for, to pay for the administration of targeting the programs. And I also want to say that I support Joy and her efforts to pull together the, the commonalities that we have, and I, I agree with those that she put forth.
Oh, I'm sorry, Terry.
Thank you. I would first like to say where I support what Colleen said, and that is, I agree that, I appreciate Councilmember Austin Lane's pulling together the, starting to pull together the council goals. But as I listen to the rest of Colleen's, I, I think we aren't talking about transferring from individual to individual. We're talking of transferring money from, excuse me, from a, from a group of individuals that have a, a common identifier, which is that they are landlords, to a group of individuals who are- who are lower income. And so, it isn't just individuals, it isn't Sarah to Ken, it's landlords to low income. But that aside, when I look at the 2,000 census data that we were handed tonight, I see sixty-two percent of the renters are below, the thirty percent of their income is going to, to their rent. But that leaves thirty-eight percent are paying more than thirty percent of their income for rent. That's a, that tells me that, at least in 2000, we were benefiting a fair number of city residents. But it also tells me that maybe there's some way that we can change things so that it does provide the relief that landlords tell us that is needed if we can refine our policy so that it is at least somewhat more targeted. And there may be some issues with my proposal to use the HUD waiting list as a way of identifying the, those people who would most need the affordable housing. But I would just ask that maybe staff could research that some to see if that is a viable idea. Because then I would be assured that, that at least that group of people would not be making more than a hundred thousand dollars a year.
I think there are a bunch of ethical issues here. And I guess ethics are, are subjective rather than objective. We all have different points of view of what's right and wrong. I don't believe, anything I've heard under the, the years of the Bush administration, that there's been any significant change in the income of the lower quartile. So, I don't have any reason to believe that the census data for the people making under twenty thousand dollars in, in 2000 would have us finding that these people had somehow hit the economic jackpot and made their way into the middle class in the last five or six years. Another way that could have changed is if they were actually displaced. And then you'd have different people living there. But those human beings, whether they're here in Tacoma Park today or whether they're living someplace else, are probably not doing much better than they were in the year 2000. Doesn't mean their incomes went up. They, they own their units, but they're also not in that group of people making twenty thousand dollars or less. You know, if you look at the census tracts that were highlighted for, for this, for the staff report, you know, one census tract, median income is twenty-five thousand seven hundred. These are 2,000 numbers, so we can adjust it however. You know, another census tract is thirty-four thousand, another census tract is thirty, thirty-four thousand, the third one is thirty-seven, and the fourth one is thirty-five, thirty, thirty thousand five hundred. People, that's half the people, this isn't the mean income, it's the median income, is half the people are making less, in one ward, in one census tract anyway, less than twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm not sure exactly where the, what median income is in Montgomery County today, but I suspect that these people fall below fifty percent of median income. Probably fell, fell right around fifty percent of median income, maybe, in 2000. But if, if that's what they're making now, a person making forty thousand dollars a year in a two-bedroom house would be paying thirty-two percent of their income if we use ninety percent of the fair market rents, not even if we use a hundred percent of the fair market rents. None of these people in these census, or half the people on all those census tracts probably fall at or below forty thousand dollars, and they would be paying more than thirty percent of their incomes. And I agree that the statistics here are difficult. They're not, they're not comparable, they don't show, they don't show the breakdowns the way I'd like to see the breakdown shown with a little bit more specificity. But I think the picture is generally gloomy, that we have a lot of people who are not earning very much money. And to dramatically change the price of housing would dramatically change the proportions of, of the, of the rent people are paying. We can say that we've got all these people right now who are only paying, you know, God forbid, twenty-five or twenty-four percent of their income for rent, but we can fix that problem by adding a hundred dollars a month to their rent. And that'll change the proportion of the rent, of their income they're paying pretty quickly. And people who are paying twenty-five percent of their income for rent but making twenty thousand dollars a year, you really don't have much left over to live on. I mean, none of us in this room, I venture to say, could deal with our families on fifteen thousand dollars a year that would be left over. And it wouldn't really be fifteen thousand dollars a year left over if you're making twenty because you'd be dumping out about twenty to thirty percent in taxes. We'd never be able to make ends meet. I mean, those families are expected to take fifteen thousand dollars a year if they're paying a quarter of their income on, on rent and somehow make all the other ends meet for their family. And I think, you know, we know that can't be done. That's just a brutal load to put on people. I, you know, I think their situation is significantly different than the landlord's situation. They can't go out to their employers tomorrow and say, you know, the city of Tacoma Park, they got rid of rent control, went to fair market rents, my rent's gone up a hundred, two hundred, three hundred dollars a month, so you've got to give me a raise to cover this. They're not going to be able to do that. It's just not going to happen. They're going to be gone. They're going to go someplace else. They're in a real different negotiating position than landlords are on the free market who can decide what the price of their building's going to be based on what the market will dare. If more people come in here looking for housing and the demand for housing increases, they can set the rent anyplace they want in accord with the demand for their housing stock. Working people at the bottom of the ladder can't make those kind of choices. They're not going to be able to go in and ask for, for more money to make ends meet. So, I think we've got to weigh the consequences for, for the human beings that are involved here. This is, this is a, this is going to be a piece of paper, but in the end, this piece of paper is going to have a serious impact on a bunch of people who live in the city today. And I, you know, I hope the council members will take time to look over the economic data. Maybe Colleen can come up with more accurate economic data, maybe we can get some kind of updates. But I would be surprised to see that, that the low-income folks in the city have suddenly improved a lot terribly in the last five years.
I agree with you about that. I think that the people who are in the lowest of the low income that are making minimum wage are not getting those three, three-point-one percent wage increases that, that we put forth tonight. So, that's true. And what we don't know is what...
Go ahead.
Do you disagree with that?
No.
What we don't know is what percentage of those folks who are in the lowest of the low income are, are still living in the city or not. So, we don't really have a lot of information about how many folks are really in that situation. But in terms of a, of a measure of how effective we are, I just want to point to page sixteen and seventeen of the Tacoma Park rent control analysis, which is the last two pages of the additional revised information agenda item number eleven. So, you know, if we look at how we compare to Montgomery County, which is probably a better measure for us than the state of Maryland, if you look under, for people who are making less than ten thousand dollars a year, which would be an important group to provide extra assistance to, we're not more effective than Montgomery County is. We're less effective than Montgomery County is in the thirty-five percent or more range. We're a little bit more effective in the thirty to thirty-four percent range, but we're not having a significant, significant impact through rent control on the lowest of the low-income folks. If you go to the next item, which is the people who are making ten thousand to twenty thousand dollars a year. Montgomery County, for folks who are rent burdened at thirty-five percent or more, we get seventy-nine point three percent of the Montgomery population, seventy-seven point seven percent of the Tacoma Park population. That's a little bit better, but it's not, it's not a huge impact that we're making there. If you look in the thirty to thirty-four percent range, Montgomery County's at four point four percent of rent burden in the, in the ten to twenty thousand, six point three. So, if you kind of combine those two numbers together, you know, we're not having a huge impact on the ten to twenty thousand dollar range either with our rent control program. Now, where we have, where we do the best with rent control is right here in the twenty to thirty-five thousand dollars. I think this is where you really see the, that strata that I was talking about. I said rent control does wonders for a particular strata. This is it right here. If you look at the thirty to thirty-four percent range, the county, eighteen point nine percent of their folks are in the thirty to thirty-four percent range, twenty-five point eight percent in Tacoma Park, which makes it seem, seem like it's worse until you look at how effective the rent control ordinance is in this twenty to thirty-five thousand dollar range at reducing people who have a thirty-five percent or more rent burden. And you really, you really see, like, this, this is the payoff with rent control. And, and I, I fully acknowledge that. And then, when you come down here and you look at the people in the thirty-five to fifty thousand dollar range, you're also getting a good payoff because you've got the county at about fourteen percent and you've got Tacoma Park at one and a half to three percent and the, and it's insignificant, over fifty thousand dollars. And so, that's just the point I want to make, is that, you know, rent control, rent control hits a particular target, but it's, it's a, it's a thin strip of people that were effective at helping with rent control. And we're missing some of the neatest folks that, that, you know, Teri is our tireless advocate for, who are making less than twenty thousand dollars a year.
Colleen, really, that's not fair. The problem is that the people at the very bottom income level are people whose incomes are so low that the rents, any rent is going to be too high for them.
Right.
If somebody is making ten thousand dollars a year, then the, to get below thirty percent, there's no rents, even in Tacoma Park, that are low enough for that.
Right. You have to have a targeted, sized program.
So, I, so let me, let me finish. So, I'm saying that, what you're saying, that we're only helping the people who have enough income so that they can afford any rent at all, I mean, that's exactly what we intend to do.
Say that again?
I say, we're, we're helping the people who have enough funding so they can pay some rent.
Right.
The very bottom people are probably going to be helped, are probably going to have to be helped by some kind of rent subsidy because there's no rent that's affordable for them.
Except, we pointed out several times, that the county doesn't provide an effective number of subsidized vouchers for folks.
Right. And that's, that's a big problem. But I think if you're going to try and provide a rent that's affordable for someone with an income below ten thousand dollars a year, I mean, unless landlords are willing to provide some units for free, we're never going to do that. Teri?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Again, I will reiterate, you know, we just got these statistics tonight, and it's interesting to look through statistics. You know, I see in the, in the thirty-five to fifty thousand dollar range that, that over eighty percent of the renters pay less than twenty-five percent of their income for rent. So, they are benefiting from rent control to a greater extent than is done outside of Tacoma Park and Montgomery County. And if you go on up to the fifty thousand and above, that it's over ninety percent of the tenants are paying less than twenty-five percent of their income. That's good for them. I'm not saying it's not good for them, but again, I think that the target that I would like to see is that there is some way we can maybe focus more assistance to those in the lower ranges, you know. People just take a moment and reflect on ten thousand dollar annual income, you know, how do you, how do you exist on that? Fifteen thousand, twenty thousand dollars. Even if it's a single individual, it's very hard to go through life on twenty thousand dollars a year if you're talking about paying your rent and getting your food. And then, quite often, people who are in that income level have health issues that require higher than, than normal medical bills. And quite often, although some of those may be paid by Medicare or Medicaid, quite often their medications aren't. So, they're having to make choices between their medications and their food, and they're certainly not thinking about luxury. So, I'm just hopeful that as we look at rent stabilization, we can see how we can shift and, and transfer money is not the right word, but shift the, the policies around so that landlords can maybe realize some of the relief they say is necessary to better maintain their properties and that, that the, those at the lowest end of the spectrum have more relief. I mean, you know, we're talking, we talked tonight about raising the, the tax rate, and that's going to affect somebody who's making twenty thousand dollars a year if we do end up passing that through to, to the tenants. And it gets passed through now through the hardship petitions. It, it, that is a significant burden on someone making twenty thousand dollars a year. You know, I can pair up anybody that wants to with a, with a low-income individual so that you can spend a month with them and understand, you know, we're not talking about, you know, slackers out here who don't want to work or whatever. You know, they're real people. They're humans, they have, they have needs, they have, they have lives that they have to live, and they have limitations on their income ability. And I think we have to appreciate that as we go through this. Thank you.
Let me, let me make a suggestion. We, we have had a fair amount of discussion about the kinds of things people are looking for. Joy summarized some of the general goals, and we've been sort of talking about other things that we could do. I don't know that it's productive for us to, to talk about it, given that everybody hasn't had a chance to look at the, the economic data. Let me make a suggestion, that if there are specific proposals, Teri put one on the table talking about defining how many people need help and what affordable means, Colleen talked about ways of measuring, I'm going to suggest that between now and the next discussion that we have, if people have that kind of proposal or anything else, that we go ahead and, and put it down and circulate it so that we can begin talking about something specific rather than talking about sort of generalities. And then, if, and then we can, we can either, you know, conclude that, conclude the discussion tonight and move on to that as the next phase, or we can try and deal with some of the specific issues in the ordinance. My sense was that people weren't, weren't ready to talk about the specific issues in the ordinance until we had aired some of these other things. But I don't think we're going to solve them tonight. And I think that the way to productively move us ahead would be for people to talk about what they want to do with more specificity. And then we can circulate them and everybody can take a look at them, and then we can talk about them at an upcoming discussion.
Okay. I won't prolong the debate, I just want to ask for some information. Could, you have a chart where you have the incomes broken down, you know, less than ten thousand, ten to nineteen, twenty to thirty-five, and then thirty-five or more. I guess I'd like more detail on the thirty-five, you know, not just thirty-five or more, but thirty-five to forty-nine and fifty to whatever it is, sixty-five. And I'd like to know, are these, are these the breaks that came in the census data? So, they, they, they go zero to ten, ten to twenty, and then the jumps start to be fifteen thousand at a time?
Based on Schedule QT-H thirteen...
Sounds authoritative.
It's less than ten thousand, ten thousand to nineteen ninety-nine, twenty thousand to thirty-four nine nine nine, and then thirty-five thousand or more.
Okay.
And that's as detailed as they get broken down by census tracts.
And do we have, so we have no ability to go back and try to get more detailed census data? That's, that's it?
I can dig, but this is the best I've been able to find, yes.
Okay. But you can get the categories above thirty-five thousand also, right?
Only on a citywide basis. The median, the median household income for Tacoma Park at, at the 2,000 census was forty-eight thousand dollars. So, it wasn't significantly higher than the thirty. It's much, it's much higher today, but in 2,000, the median household income for Tacoma Park was forty-eight something.
Well, that's, that, that in itself is an interesting statistic because that tells you that the fifty-five percent of the renters were below thirty-five thousand dollars, and yet the median income for the city was forty-eight. That's, I mean, that's...
The, the information I have right now stops at thirty-five thousand or more, except at the citywide level.
Is that the, you're talking about the information on rental affordability?
On rental, renter household incomes on a census track level, which is the information that Councilmember Howard should ask.
Is there more general, is there, that information available by census track but not by rental household? not by rental household after that? In other words, if I wanted to look at census tract, whatever it was, 701, 7.01, for people between 35 and 49, can I get that number even if it wasn't broken out into renter and non-renter?
I will look again. I couldn't find it when I was looking earlier. I know it's available at the community-wide level.
And do you know off the top of your head what median income in Montgomery County is now? Somebody must know out there. Sharon?
I think it's $35,000 to $90,000.
So six, so 50% of median, then it would be $45,000. Thank you.
Okay. I'm too tired to continue going through the details at this point, but I'm going to suggest that, as I said earlier, that people specify their proposals in some detail so we can talk about them. We have one more item that we need to talk about this evening, and that is the MML --
Do you have public comment?
We had public comment on earlier. Suzanne, are we ready for legislative priorities?
Good evening.
An apologies for keeping you waiting.
Oh, that's fine. I actually ended up getting involved in an issue out there, so it was, the time is fine. I'd like to speak this evening about the Maryland Municipal League's Legislative Action Request process. Every year, the MML asks for municipalities to suggest legislative items that they might consider as a priority agenda for the MML to legislate, to advocate for in the state legislature. And generally, every year, we submit several applications for this. As you know, last year's state legislature was very lively. A lot of issues related to municipalities were considered, and I've outlined the status of some of those in our cover page. Last year, we had four suggestions for legislative action requests for the MML priorities. One was, two related to the TASD recommendations. One was raising the state's 17% cap on county income tax rebates to municipalities. One would have provided for an arbitration or appeals process regarding the amount a county pays to a municipality for tax duplication. We had an item recommending the municipal energy electrical aggregation that we have supported for several years. And one was to allow municipalities to establish criteria for a supplement to the homeowner's property tax credit. I have to admit, I was a bit stumped as to what to suggest for this year's legislative action request, because the requests questionnaire talks about if you submitted this recently, what has, and you were not approved for the, what might have changed in the last year that would then make this a different situation this year. And I honestly kind of hit a wall on that. It would be useful if you've got some sense from discussion with other folks in the other municipalities, if there's an issue that might still come to the fore. The only one that I can think of is municipal energy aggregation because of the excitement about electric rates. The other items, frankly, I, I don't see them moving very forward into the MML process. There's a number of items that I think we should propose, and we'll talk about it another time for our regular legislative program, but through the MML legislative priorities process, I'm not sure what to recommend. I did go through and look at our condominium conversion legislation to see if there was an item that seemed to be universal for municipalities. I honestly didn't find something that seemed easy to, to move forward.
Do we know what the, you had said, supplement to the homeowner's property tax credit. Do we know what the outcome of the legislation that passed in the legislature this year?
Could I, it's very hard for even me to hear what's going on. If we can just, you know, focus on what we're doing right now. The, the homeowner's property tax credit, they, we were very interested, and I know that there were some changes actually made in the state legislation, but I don't yet know how they affect us, because I wasn't able to figure that out.
No, I haven't figured it out either. Frankly, I think it's, it's going to take a little bit of time to get a sense of it, because there were a number of changes in, through state legislation, and there were also some county changes. And put together, my sense is that they're positive and helpful for us, especially in dealing with the households that we've been particularly wanting to assist, which perhaps elderly householders who were stuck with, with their house assessments going up a lot and their taxes going up a lot, but on fixed incomes, those kinds of things. I think that there is a lot to help, but I don't know tangibly what that means, and we've got, you know, an assessment coming very soon.
Right. People with fixed incomes aren't necessarily all elderly, many of them are, but not all of them are.
No.
I, I think this would be an important, when I hear from other municipal officials, that there, that this concern about rising property taxes and, you know, and how it affects people who have been in the community for a long time and may have lower incomes than the people who are moving in, it's something that other people are feeling, and so that might be an exploration that we should have.
Yes. I think there were approximately eight bills that were passed in this legislature that affected property tax rates in various forms. And in trying to give people some assistance with the problem, as you said, we don't know how that quantifies and affects Tacoma Park residents at this time.
Mm-hmm. The other one that I think we should try again is municipal electrical energy aggregation, because it did come very close. And I know that they didn't want to move forward with it last year, I'm not quite sure why, but I think that the increase in, in energy costs may have changed people's mind a little bit. Anybody else have other suggestions?
Are there other discussions, other ideas?
You know, we've been talking about affordable housing, certainly region-wide, that is one of the top issues. And I would say that if we, if we came up with any ideas for potential policy changes, they would be embraced by many municipalities. I don't know if we have discussed in the past what the state policies are for housing and if there's, if there's ways. I know we struggle trying to, trying to change our own policies, but if we think on a broader basis, that may be where we may be able to have a much more effective, play a much more effective role in providing for those people who need some housing relief. Certainly, the homeowner tax credit is, is one way, but for renters, that's something that maybe we, as a council, should give some thought to and see if we can, can take a leadership role in, in trying to address a region-wide problem.
Yeah. In that, I'll certainly ask around in some of the affordable housing circles in Maryland.
And council governments would be a good resource, too.
Right. The, the challenge that we always have with MML Legislative Action Requests is that they tend to be things that would tangibly benefit municipalities in Maryland and
They would benefit us, for sure.
Certainly, but across Maryland, and to make a strong case for that. So that'd be part of the question that I'd try to find out, you know, is there a suggestion that would seem to meet some of those criteria?
And as you might expect, I once again would like to see the electrical aggregation on this.
Any other ideas?
Did you mention the condo bill?
But you had said that you had looked into the condo bill to see if there was something that was sort of universal and not just for us. This is not our
This, this is for the MML Legislative Action Requests. And I did go through all of the different condo bills and the things that we had supported. I didn't see one that, that kind of neatly fit into a MML request.
I would love to go forward again with the arbitration or appeals process. I think that one probably, just based on my conversations with people, has a better shot than the other one, the 17% one. And, you know, it's still a good idea.
What I will do is draft up the draft legislative action request and email them around to the council members. And then there would be, in two weeks, the resolution that would then authorize the forwarding of those legislative action requests to MML.
The logical place for this to happen would be, I think, the Department of Planning, because I think they deal with municipal issues more than anyone, anyone else.
On the arbitration?
Okay. If there's nothing else, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne, for waiting all that time.
Oh, that's fine.